Regular meeting of the Board of Education for September 11th, 2018. And let me ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you will stay standing for a short moment in recognition that this is 9/11, 17th anniversary.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at the portion of the meeting for public comment, so I wonder if I could ask the two staff to kind of sit aside because public members come up to present as they wish, and that way there's room for them at the chair. This is the time where members of the public can come forward and discuss or present to us, not discuss, but present to us any thoughts that they have on agenda items only. You can talk at the end of the meeting, but you are welcome to talk at the beginning of the meeting. If I could get a show of hands so they have a sense of how many people are going to actually come forward. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight of 10. We do have a limit of three minutes. We do not respond to questions. If you have a question that you'd want a response to, then feel free to address that to the administration, and to the extent that it's a board policy question, she would get it to the board as well. Several of you have taken advantage to email the board, and you can continue to do that also. So please try not to be repetitive of the prior speaker's comments, but feel free to avail yourself of the three minutes, or less time if you don't need the full three minutes. So who wishes to come forward? We do it on a first come, first served basis, so whoever gets to the chair first. State your name and address, please.
I'm Alex, I'm a school psychologist at the Early Childhood Center, and my address is 6 Summerville Street.
And can I ask, is it coming through on the microphone?
No. I got it. I got it. I can't even laugh.
But we need to pick it up unfortunately, both on Fair TV. This broadcast is going national. It's actually just within this region. So we need to have it recorded in our official files and on Fair TV.
Test one, two.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
I have to talk. I'm Gina Hallick. I'm a school psychologist at the Early Childhood Center, and I live at 6 Summerville Street. Esteemed members of the Board of Education, we are the educators of the Early Childhood Center. We respectfully request that you thoughtfully consider our input when engaging in decisions that impact the future of our school. When considering a centralized versus decentralized model, it is our collective professional opinion that decentralizing our program by dispersing us across various elementary schools would be a disservice, not only to the children we are responsible for educating, but also to their families. We currently provide a comprehensive, carefully structured program, which views children in a holistic manner. All children participating in our integrated and social skills classroom have access to skilled special education teachers who present a developmentally appropriate curriculum, weekly social skills instruction provided by a school psychologist or social worker, weekly collaborative instruction from speech-language pathologists and occupational therapists. We offer monthly parent workshops to support parents, and twice yearly workshops for community preschool directors and their staff. The Early Childhood Assessment Team screens children on a monthly basis and is a large component of our child find process. Being housed in one school supports our collaborative process and allows us to be a unified force for growth in the children and families we serve. Collectively, we work on executive functioning skills, emotional regulation, language development, independence and adaptive skills, self-advocacy, motor skills, and pre-academic skills. In our opinion, separating us would be diluting the impact of our current integrated transdisciplinary model. We are a highly unified force with general parity and homogeneity across our classrooms. We are stronger together. The majority of our children transition successfully to kindergarten. For the minority who struggle, we view this discrepancy as related to the exponential increase in academic and social demands, and do not feel these challenges will be ameliorated by a setting change. Our children and families are vulnerable. This is their first experience with the special education process. It is very important to us that we provide them with the care and counsel they need to navigate what is often a difficult time. Part of this process involves connecting with other families who are sharing a similar experience. We have a close-knit parent group who are highly supportive of each other. We feel that decentralizing us would interrupt this process of acceptance for our families and would be unfair to them and potentially detrimental to their children. Staff members with the greatest seniority remember a time when our program was decentralized and have spoken to this approach as being only marginally successful. The integrity of the program was undermined. Due to the disjointed nature of that model, implementing program changes was reportedly difficult. With our current model, there is an inherent flexibility to alter programming as appropriate. For example, the opportunity for a child to move into a less restrictive environment if their progress warrants that. A clear need for a centralized program was seen, and our program was born. Thank you for your time and consideration. We feel strongly about maintaining a unified intact program and sincerely hope that you share our view. We hope that you do not close our school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From time to time, I have to ask forbearance from the audience to not applaud whether you agree with somebody or whether you don't agree with somebody, not only out of courtesy, but because it makes the meeting go more efficiently. So I ask for your patience in that regard. Who else wishes to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Melissa Travis, 270 Ward Terrace in Fairfield. My son finished the ECC program last year, and I feel strongly enough to be here today, even though I don't currently have a child enrolled. When he went to the school, he couldn't speak, he couldn't say truck, he couldn't form a sentence, he couldn't communicate with me. By the time he finished with the ECC, he could speak in complete sentences. He's now in kindergarten, doing well. And he couldn't have done that if he was just in one singular class in an elementary school. It's the combination of the several different teachers that got him to where he is today. The speech teacher working with his regular teacher, his occupational therapy teacher working with his speech teacher. It's a special gift for kids to get to go to ECC here in Fairfield. It's something that I couldn't have gotten anywhere else. When I got the diagnosis that my child had delays, I didn't know what to do or how to address this. And on day one in ECC, I knew that he was going to be okay. And I'm forever grateful to the teachers and the staff at ECC, and to close them would be a huge detriment to our community. And even though my younger son hopefully does not have a delay, I want him to go there and experience the love that these teachers give the students. And I just really hope that you consider keeping them all together, and it's really the only way that these kids that need help are going to get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Somebody from the back wanted to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Moitoso, 17 Tamar Place. My husband works in the district. I teach kindergarten in Westport. I have a son, Teddy, who's three and a half, who currently goes to the ECC, which by the way, thank you ladies so much for all your amazingness. I can't tell you how amazing you've been for my son and where he's come from. I just wanted to speak to a couple of things. I feel that the transition is not necessarily, not that it's as important, or not as important from four to a five-year-old going to kindergarten, but thinking about three-year-olds separating from their family from the first time is something that should definitely be considered greatly, as obviously it can be more difficult. As a kindergarten teacher, I do see there can be some difficulties in transitioning from preschool, but the school psychologists at our elementary school should be working together with the people at the ECC to make that transition a little bit more smooth. I also do have to echo that even though I teach in a different school district, I do find that the increased academics that we're pushing on these kids in kindergarten, it's basically like I'm teaching first grade. So I do think that that also has something to do with, possibly with the difficulty in transitioning, going into kindergarten. I do ask respectfully that you consider keeping the ECC together. Being a teacher for 10 years, special education has to be working together, all those people. It's not going to work if they're all separate. They constantly rely on each other. When my son was having a really hard time transitioning, he was kicking and screaming. I couldn't get him in the building. I had his school psychologist, his speech pathologist, Ms. Eileen, his teacher, the nurse, all surrounding me, helping me, because I was really upset, too. So I do just ask that you consider keeping them together under the same house. I think it would be a detriment if they were set apart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who wishes to come forward? Please state your name and address.
My name is Ashley Walsh. I'm a school psychologist at the Early Childhood Center, and my address is 50 Sedan Terrace in Fairfield. Dr. Heitzman, who is a pediatric neuropsychologist and professor of developmental psychology, as well as a father of a recent ECC graduate, had submitted a letter to the board and was unable to be here tonight, so I was just going to read an excerpt from his letter. He had written, "Children benefit from the social community such that they are exposed to more peers with similar and overlapping disabilities than they will ever be in the future. The most painful aspect of growing up with a disability may be feeling as if you are the only one with a problem. In a centralized, integrated preschool, students are protected from this. They learn to socialize and to be accepted. Many of the students from the ECC will graduate, move on to their elementary schools, and need staff support to guide their self-esteem as they attempt to survive and adapt in the typical community, who may or may not understand the way the staff and peers did at the ECC." To decentralize the ECC and spread it across the elementary schools will not only deprive parents and students of their community, but it will also flip them into a less supportive community. He also went on to say, "For this population of children with developmental disorders, it is critical to offer explicit developmental support across domains and in an integrated manner. For example, use their inherent social skills to support language. Or flip that script to use language to support social. Use motor skills to support social or language, or flip the script and have language support, motor coordination." The centralized ECC is essential for this because it maintains a framework that emphasizes developmental foundation of integrated skills for life and adaptive functioning. He urges in his letter that the board prioritize the development and education of the most vulnerable population over space issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Kristi, by tally, 49 Longview Avenue. Yes, we're friends, not family. Okay, so my daughter is 12 years old. She went through ECC quite a while ago. I have transitioned into an elementary school, and I have transitioned into a middle school. What I have learned is that the integration at the ECC is so incredibly unique that as a parent of a child with extreme special needs, I gained almost as much as she did from that experience. And the supports in place in elementary school and middle school may be somewhat on par for her, for a child. There's still going to be speech and OT, and all of these services are going to happen in an elementary school. But what happens in the integrated program at ECC is there are multiples. There are two, three speech therapists, and they are working together, looking at a child who's three years old. How do you really know what their biggest speech or communication issue is going to be? But three of them together in an area where there are tons of skill sets, working together to look at what that child needs, and then make a decision to help them go into the right elementary school. Because once you get into elementary school, you get one speech therapist, and their specialty might not be the one that your child needs. And if you do that from a three-year-old, and you move them into a school with one speech therapist who treats a certain set of kids, the way that you treat a three-year-old is not the same way you treat a 10-year-old. Your interactions are not the same, your experiences are not the same. And so even setting back from gaining maybe socialization for the threes and fours with five-year-olds, you are hurting them by making this window for the speech therapist, the OT, all of those people, to treat such a wide parity of kids, when these threes and fours and almost fives, who are, they're not only our most vulnerable kids, they're our tiniest kids. Some of these special needs kids are not walking, they're three years old, they're not eating, they're not feeding themselves. And the way that you approach them is different than you do a 10-year-old who is in a class with 25 other kids. The ECC gives the opportunity for these kids to be with other kids with special needs, to also be with other kids who are typical, and to get that experience. But to get this, this not, this integration of OT, PT, speech is not one-to-one. It's not just multidisciplinary, it's multi-experiences from the many people, not just, it's crossing classes. It's the sped teacher talking to the sped teacher that isn't available if you put them in a preschool, in an elementary school, with one preschool teacher. And how you make that balance. So the benefits that come out of this for these kids, and really making the right decision for their education, is one that I hope you'll consider.
Thank you very much. Who would like to come forward? Please state your name and address.
My name's Matt Wilcox. I live at 528 Brookside Drive in Fairfield. To give you some background on my family, I have a six-year-old boy in first grade who's thriving thanks to all the folks sitting behind me, and I have four-year-old twin boys who currently attend the ECC as well. Our oldest boy, at the age of three, had been kicked out of two preschools or pre-K programs before we found the ECC, and Ms. Bruno told us that they would accept my son. I'm actually here today because my wife would need six or seven minutes to choke back her tears, so I'm supporting not just the great people behind me, but my wife's ways as well. Acceptance is a huge piece of the ECC program, not just for the kids, but for the families that are involved and the community that the ECC has created. And when I hear the term decentralization, I also hear the term deconstruction of a really successful program, and a deconstruction of a community that all the great people behind me have spent hours building for not just the kids, like I said, but the family members. My three-year-old old boy would not be able to go to a birthday party without hitting someone, without pushing someone, without being able to communicate his feelings, and the great people behind us helped him to the point where he could sit in a chair without getting in someone's space. He's at Burr School right now in first grade and doing great, thanks to the acceptance and the support we got, not just from the staff, but from the other parents in the program. And by decentralization or deconstruction, you're taking away that community that all the parents need, as well as the children. So I implore you to think about, it's not just moving kids from classroom to classroom, it's deconstructing a community that the parents need, just as importantly as the children do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who would like to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I was going to read, but I'm going to try and talk without crying. I just recently transitioned my three-year-old twin boys into the ECC from home-based birth-to-three programming, which, as you can imagine, it's very personal, and it was terrifying. And walking into the meeting and seeing a face of people determined to make sure your children succeed is amazing. So I implore you to think about the window of time we get and changes that could affect us for years and years to come. So, thank you for listening to the educators and the parents and the alumni as we go into this journey, and I hope you'll think about the kids that are coming behind that haven't even had a chance yet, and put that thought in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did very well. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Sally Connolly, and I live at 682 Tunxus Hill Road in Fairfield. I am here to express my concern about the possible decentralization of Fairfield's beloved ECC program. My two middle children, Clara and Tierney, attended ECC as part of the Just Kids program between 2009 and 2012 with Ms. Wendy. We are still friends with many of the kids and parents we met there. As a speech-language pathologist who previously worked in the birth-to-three setting, I understand the importance of early intervention in the future success of these students. For parents who have sought out services for their children as they notice difficulty moving, feeding, swallowing, understanding, and communicating, the ECC offers great hope, love, reassurance, and guidance to parents and their children through a dedicated and specialized staff. I am here to support friends, teachers, the rehab team, and especially the families of the ECC, past, present, and future. We were fortunate and honored to be a part of the ECC community, and we thank you. As you, Dr. Jones, Mr. Mancusi, the Board of Ed members, and the Fairfield Public School staff make decisions moving forward, I implore you to do the following. First, listen to your ECC staff and families. They live it every day and know what is best for their students and children. Two, consider that decentralization will spread equipment, teacher, and rehab resources across locations. It threatens to separate teacher and student pairings that might otherwise be more effective. It also waters down a supportive community, family environment that parents rely on. Three, ensure that the admission-application process promotes the strongest pair matchings for the special education students. My oldest son, Coleman, was at the pre-K at McKinley in 2007, which was later moved to Burr. Originally intended to support ELL and financially disadvantaged students, I was always concerned, as were many teachers at the ECC, when the pre-K changed to a central application process in lieu of the auditioned peer process that we experienced. Our special education and ELL students deserve the best peer models based on each child's specific needs, and these peer models learn so much from these diverse environments. Lastly, remember that any financial savings now are short-sighted. Not only are we dealing with the well-being of our special education population in Fairfield, research has consistently shown that effective and early intervention not only produces greater gains in education and development, it is also much more cost-efficient in the long run. These are facts that everyone should be able to agree on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You, I think, did two, three, two minutes and 59 seconds. Timed it very well. Anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, Eric Sunman, RTM District 10, 51 French Street in Fairfield. Thank you for your time this evening. I have a four-year-old son at ECC, and I've been a member of the community for going on three years now. And I'm here to support the centralization of the program. I definitely think that it would be a huge mistake to this community, to our town. This is a gift that we have at this town that a lot of residents don't know about. And many of the families that need the program, use the program, are transformed by it, by these professionals that are sitting behind me. You know, I just think that they need to have their own space in a certain location, and I'd like to see a plan as to where that would be. And it's important to keep it efficient and productive, and I think just splitting up everybody is not going to be efficient, it's not going to be helpful. My son is doing great, and I'm forever thankful to these people that are behind me. And, you know, I'd like to kind of understand a little bit more about why now, what's the rush. I just learned about this about two weeks ago, so I'm a little behind the eight ball. But, you know, we should be proud in this town to start these kids off the right way, and we have our resources, and to split them up, I just think is the wrong thing to do, and I really hope that you can find a way to make it happen, to keep them all together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on either this issue or any other issue that is on the agenda? See nobody, almost nobody's standing up. Please state your name and address.
It's Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street. Just quickly, I don't want to steal the thunder of ECC, but there is another thing on the agenda, the enrollment update, that I'd just like to make an observation about and a suggestion going forward. The observation is, I know it's on the agenda, and we're going to see, hear an update on, and we're not going to probably have details tonight, and I get that, but I would like to point out that when we do have the details by school, I hope we do the analysis and compare what these numbers show to the Malone-McBroom projections that we've been working off of, just to point out that, you know, the numbers we get from them, if you compared the two years of 2016 and 2017, there's some pretty significant variations. So I just hope we do the analysis and make sure we pay attention to that, because it obviously has impacts on a lot of things. The last point I'd make is, when it obviously impacts a budget, when we do a budget, I suggest it would be nice to see, do something like Westport does, and put those numbers in, the actual numbers in the budget, the 930 numbers, not so, so we can, we as a public can know what we're really working off of as we go forward to what we're looking to. So I think that would be helpful, to have the real numbers in the budget as to where we're working from, rather than last year's budget number. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward to speak on any agenda item, any business item? Seeing nobody stand up, thank you very much. So we'll move forward with our agenda, and that's a presentation on the ECC program and facility update. Mr. Mancusu and Dr. Jones, do you have any opening comment that you wish to make?
I do.
And we have a slideshow, so for those of us here, we should fill the few empty seats that are out there.
Thank you, first of all, to Mr. Mancusi and to Ms. Bruno for being here to present tonight. When you ask why now, I think it's, hopefully what they present tonight is going to help people understand that we have some challenges that are very much facilities-driven, that are impacting lots of aspects of ECC, not only staffing, but where we have space for future growth, current growth, and so they're going to talk about some of that tonight. And I think it's important for the community to know, this is not a decision-making evening. So I want people to be able to breathe a little bit. I know teachers are very nervous when you hear us talk about your school site, and parents as well. This is really informational for this first meeting for the board to understand what are some of the challenges that we're facing with growth, because you do a great job. And I think by the time they finish this presentation tonight, you'll be able to hear that, and then you'll also know what our next steps are. We expect to be back in front of the board again in October, again in November. We expect to involve the community, involve the staff on problem-solving, so that we can have solutions that we all believe are the best for children and the best for the school district as a whole. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Mancusi here.
Just real quick, are we getting a copy of this presentation to look over?
We don't have a copy right now. Generally, we don't before the meeting, but we can certainly, if you want us to...
No, we generally have one while the presentation's going on.
Yeah, we did not make copies. Sorry.
Would you like us to take a five-minute break, and I can run and make copies for you?
No, they're all waiting.
Okay. I apologize.
Please, can I just...
Yes, I can. Okay. Before we start, I do want to thank all the parents and all the staff for coming out. We have great respect. As a father of a severely nonverbal autistic child, I understand the importance of high-quality early childhood programming for our children. And we have the utmost respect for our staff and our teachers. We are going to share some information... We are going to share some information, why we are here, some challenges we face, and then the next steps we would like to take in terms of meeting with parents and staff to gather information, so we all can have a community conversation to enable the board to make an informed decision moving forward. My name is Rob Mancusi. I'm the Director of Special Education for the Fairfield Schools. Next to me is my colleague, Christine Bruno. She is the Early Childhood Special Ed Coordinator. As Dr. Jones stated, why are we discussing early child programming facilities? Because our primary ECC facility located at Fairfield Ward High School is at maximum capacity. We're outgrowing the facility, and this impacts our ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers, as well as has an impact on special ed teacher caseloads. How do we determine capacity? Targeted staffing ratio for preschool students with disabilities, you know, our targeted ratio, which is best practice, is about one teacher to every 12 students with a, as close to a 50-50 ratio of students with disabilities to non-disabled peers. Currently, at capacity with our six classrooms, if we had four classrooms at 12 students apiece in each morning session and each afternoon session, that would bring us to 96 students. One classroom projected at 12 students who had more extensive needs and required a full-day or extended-day program would add 12, and then with a CLC at our ECC, up to 10 students. We project total capacity for the site at Ward High School to be 118 students.
So currently, our early childhood programming across the district is in several locations. At the ECC at Ward High School, we have six classrooms, and in those classrooms are students that have been identified with disabilities and delays, and also typical peers who are there just for their preschool education. We also have a classroom at Stratfield Elementary School that services students with disabilities and non-disabled peers in that classroom. The district has two other special, two other classrooms, one at Stratfield and one at Burr Elementary, that offer an early childhood or preschool education for children that have not been identified with disabilities.
Where are we now? We have ECC classes currently, well, ECC classes do not have maximum enrollment for obvious reasons. We have to program for all students that are determined eligible for special education. Current class size average is approximately 11 students in both the ECC sites at Fairfield Ward High School and at Stratfield Elementary School as of the first day of school. During the 17th school year, from the first day of school to June, our enrollment for students with disabilities grew by 41 students. That would add an additional six students to each ECC classroom, which would bring each classroom to an average of 17. Our targeted number, remember, would be 12. Okay, current, and this is the current enrollment data from 2014 to 2018. You can see as the school years progress to the right, the first number is our start, our October 1st enrollment, the last, the number behind the slash is the June 1st number for each of those years. Just to point to your, point out, in 2016-17, the ECC did add a class because of expanding enrollment. Again, for the 17-18, an additional class was added, but because of space challenges, that class was placed at Stratfield Elementary School for this past school year. Already, we're starting the 19, 18-19 school year with 128 students. That includes 25 students at Stratfield Elementary School to start the year, which already exceeds what we ended last school year with, when that number grew from nine to 24. So using 12 as our guide for, you know, maximum capacity in each class to enable us to provide high-quality early childhood education services to our students, we're already over that at 25. The percentage of non-disabled peers in our early childhood classes ranges at this time from 20% to 40%, as I previously stated, our target ratio is 50-50. And the asterisk on the 17-18 and 18-19 school year just indicates that those numbers include those students who attend the ECC at Stratfield Elementary School.
So we've tried to work within the facilities that we have to respond to the increasing enrollment, because it has gone up each year. So we did add that classroom at ECC two years ago, and then last year, we added the classroom at Stratfield School. So I wanted to talk about what drives enrollment and how does that enrollment increase. So there's really, I'm going to talk about five different ways that children join our program. I like to say that it's always the first day of school for someone, because this enrollment does change throughout the year. The first is children who are identified through birth-to-three, the state system with delays, and they are referred to us within 90 days of their third birthday. We conduct an evaluation, and if the child is determined eligible, we propose services, and those begin as the child turns three. A second way is that parents or teachers or anyone may call our school regarding a child, or call the special ed office regarding a child who lives in Fairfield and is within the ages of three and not yet in kindergarten, from three to kindergarten, and make a referral to special ed. And at that point, we would convene a meeting to plan and conduct an evaluation, and again, coming back together within our 45-school-day timeline to determine whether the child is eligible, and if so, to develop a plan and begin services. Another way is through the Child Find activities that we conduct. That includes our monthly developmental screenings, our early childhood assessment team, through early intervention or SRBI with kids who may be within our program or community preschools, consultation, and other activities to try to identify students who are in need of referral and evaluation. This also works on that 45-day timeline from the date of referral to plan, conduct, and complete an evaluation, planning, and placement. Another way that students join our program, these are our typical peers, and that's through that common application process through the instructional office. So families can apply and select ECC or the class, any of the other preschool programs, and they would join our program as long as there were spots available, and we try to manage that based on the number of kids we anticipate need special education services in the program. And then also, families will move into Fairfield and have a child with an active IEP from another district, and so we need to offer comparable services and work to provide services for that child, so there's not a gap. The kind of programming that we provide is really based on the individual child's areas of need and strength, and we really do provide a continuum, so it could be everything from consultation and professional development for community preschool teachers, parent support and parent training. We provide itinerant services, so aside from the classroom program, there are a number of students that also come to receive speech and language, social skills, or occupational and physical therapy, and then we have our classroom programming.
So, so the past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of discussion about centralized versus decentralized programming, which was born out of the challenge that we face with being at capacity in terms of space at Ward High School. The ECC facility located at Fairfield Ward High School is intended to be a centralized programming facility for preschool students with disabilities as well as non-disabled students. Centralized programming facilities are also intended to provide all early childhood programs and services within one location. Decentralized programming, our early childhood facilities providing the same service in more than one location. The Early Childhood Center at Stratfield Elementary School is considered a decentralized Okay, strengths. These are strengths of our current ECC program. One of our biggest strengths is our highly professional staff, who clearly are dedicated to our students and our families, and to having a positive impact on the lives of those in which they have the pleasure to work with. It's a preschool community for students and families. They provide a continuum of services that allows for teams to expand student progress and adjusting programs. They can, they have a specific professional learning community to preschool. Facilities and scheduling are designed specifically for the need of the preschool students. Flexible, they utilize flexible space to meet student needs, and so forth. And the facility is intended to be able to support extended used school-year services for students with disabilities.
So our current programming is both a hybrid of centralized and decentralized, as we have our main location at ECC, but we also have the classroom program at Stratfield, and that has called to attention some differences between the locations. So there are differences in terms of schedule and service provided. So our preschool classrooms at Burr and Stratfield follow the elementary schedule, so students attend five days and they do follow the six-day rotation. Students in the classrooms at Burr and Stratfield have the opportunity to participate in art, music, physical education, and the other specials that are offered in the buildings. Students at the ECC, because of our collaborative model, have the opportunity to have collaborative teaching from a speech pathologist and an occupational therapist in the pre-K classroom outside of IEP hours. Kids at the ECC do have physical education twice a week.
Our current challenges in Fairfield regarding early childhood program is our facility at Fairfield Ward High School is at capacity. Our class sizes are larger than we would like. The peer ratio is larger than, is smaller than ideal. Programs now operate in two different locations, and the transitions from preschool to kindergarten, some have been difficult.
So some of the opportunities presented by having a classroom in another location or in an elementary school could potentially be the ability to work on those transitions to be sure that kids are ready for kindergarten and kindergarten is ready for the students. The opportunity for potential access to resources, such as some of the specialists in the other school settings. There's an opportunity for professional development between pre-K and kindergarten teachers. There's the ability to program for students flexibly as they move into kindergarten, and also the opportunity for older students to serve as role models.
Some challenges that we face with decentralized programming in Fairfield is providing the support to parents specific to the needs of preschool children, ensuring appropriate allocation of staff to meet the needs at each location. That's something that we would have to look at very carefully. Maintain collaboration and consistency of practice among all early childhood staff among the different sites. Appropriate facilities, including bathrooms, playgrounds, and therapy spaces, very, very important for preschool children. Balancing class sizes and access to opportunities for students from site to site, and strengthening capacity of elementary staff to understand and be able to respond to the unique needs of this population of students. Okay. Communication and information gathered thus far. We've begun to, we had the pleasure of meeting with the early childhood staff, sitting behind me, Kristin and I. We had an initial meeting with our early childhood consultant from Cooperative Education Services. After discussing our challenges with her, the recommendation was that we visit various centralized and decentralized programs within Fairfield County. She recommended Darien, Greenwich, Trumbull, and Wilton. To date, we've been able to visit the Wilton program and the Darien program. We've contacted parents of all the students who attended the Early Childhood Center at Stratfield Elementary School last year, anticipating, you know, because after meeting with the ECC staff, it was clear that, you know, they feel very strongly about a centralized location, as they've stated tonight. So we initially reached out to the Stratfield folks and parents to see what their thoughts on programming was at the ECC, at the decentralized location at Stratfield last year. Generally, I have to say, I was able to actually have conversations with 11 of 15 parents, left several messages for others, but I know people are very busy. We will continue to seek their input. A lot of positive input on their experiences. And I think the comments they made were generally positive experiences just of the ECC in general, not so much the location. There was one parent who said whose child was split. They preferred the site at Fairfield Ward High School, but there was a parent who preferred the site at Stratfield Elementary School, because she liked the fact that they were in, you know, a pre-K through five setting. They had a lot of accolades about our staff. Our next steps, this is what we want to do next and what we plan on to do next. We want to visit additional early childhood programs with both centralized and decentralized program models. We're going to visit Milford, we're going to visit Greenwich, and we're going to visit Trumbull by the end of September. We're going to schedule meetings with parents of students currently attending the Early Childhood Center throughout September and October to gather additional parent input and thoughts on what is best for our students and their children. I'm going to be attending the Septa meeting on the 26th to speak to Septa parents on this topic. We're going to follow up with the Board of Education in our, in your October meeting and your November meeting. We're going to follow up with ECC staff throughout September and October as well, to get more detailed information on what they feel the specific needs of this population of students is. Additionally, we're going to gather additional information and present early childhood programming options to the Board of Education by November. So after we have an opportunity to meet with all the folks that we just discussed, visit programs, we're going to present options for the board to consider. We're going to review early childhood schedules and services and recommend revisions to create equity and equal access across the district for our early childhood students, and we're going to develop a staffing formula by October that I'm going to review with Dr. Jones. That is our, the end of our formal presentation. If there's any questions. We did get a list of questions from Mrs. Vitale this afternoon. We will get those responses to you. Thank you.
You answered a lot of them. It was not necessarily for tonight, but just over the course of this discussion.
All right, thank you.
So, Dr. Jones, do you have any other comments that you want to make before the board has discussion?
No, I think that it's just probably the chart that's...
No, I think that it's just probably the chart that's the most important is the one that has the numbers on there. And I, I think it's really important when you look at that there were over 160 students last year, and that really is the challenge. And, you know, we had, we do listen to staff, and Bob Schmoller is a great cheerleader for staffing ratios, and we do feel like we have pressures in lots of different areas, and one of them is our class size. I was in a classroom last year, and when I came out, I remember asking Kristin, I said, "I counted 22 children in there." And so, it was a large class, and then I think somebody else was probably coming in for social reasons, but I was really shocked that our class sizes had grown that large. And I think that's not in the best interest of our children. The other thing is the peer model. I think, and I think the staff would say, we all believe in that. And so, many of the letters that you received today were parents that talked about the value of having the peer model. If we continue to put all of our special needs children in that one setting, the only way you gain extra spaces is to start, continue really eliminating the peer. And Kristin's done a great job of really trying to hold on to those spots. That's one of the reasons we moved the program and had to decentralize last year. That wasn't really what we would say is ideal, because now we have a split model. And so, we just, we have a lot of work to do, and we want to be collaborative in our approach over the next few months to figure out what is the long-term solution to the problems that we're facing, the challenges.
So, we will have this on our agenda for the next couple of months to have further conversation, but if there are any questions that board members have at the moment, I have, okay, Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitco.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Mancusi. One question, you mentioned some districts, Darien, Greenwich, Trumbull, Wilton, Milford. How many of those are centralized versus decentralized?
Wilton is centralized. They have a pre-K, pre-K through two facility. Their preschool students are in, you know, they have a preschool wing, but they do access the regular, the rest of the building for all their specials. So, there's service, so they do have interaction with the building. Darien is decentralized. They just got bored, their board just approved a plan to centralize. They, their facilities in their three buildings, they're not, they want updated facilities for their preschool students. Greenwich is decentralized. Trumbull is centralized, and Milford is decentralized.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned in the presentation that you're going to be developing a staffing formula?
Yes. What we're finding is that staff caseloads, when they get to a certain level, we believe that it impacts the integrity of programming. We feel the caseloads for some of our ECC teachers is higher than optimal. So, by developing a formula that will be a guideline to help us make decisions when it's appropriate to request additional staff, I think will be helpful.
Okay, and then the other thing, too, you said you were planning on eventually presenting early childhood programming options.
After our work, we were planning on presenting.
So, by options, you mean like decentralized versus centralized? Is there, are there any other options other than those two, or is that pretty, is it pretty much one or the other?
Well, there's a lot of different, there's different options on what a decentralized program looks like if that's the route. Or if we keep the ECC and then we have to respond to the growth of how do we make our programming consistent among sites? So, there will be different decentralized options as well as, you know, an option of maintaining the ECC, but we definitely have to, we anticipate that we're probably going to need another classroom at least for next year, another CLC at our preschool, so.
Okay, well, I guess to that point, I guess one question I have, just kind of going to throw it out there, is that if we really value the centralized system acknowledging the space limitations, would it not make sense to try to look at a short-term thing, saying we may need an additional classroom, whether that's providing another classroom at Stratfield or another elementary school for the short term, but in the meantime, look at a long-term plan to try to find space to have two ECCs? And perhaps make this, this would make the one that we have now smaller, because you'd be able to take some of the students from there. Would that be a possibility? And I realize that I'm talking about a hypothetical space that probably none of us know exists, but I just wonder, instead of debating the decentralized, centralized, if we truly feel that centralized is the best option, might it not make sense, instead of kind of going through all of these things, to try to look ahead, long-term, and say, should we have two ECCs?
That's a good question, and we will be prepared to answer that. That is a possibility.
Right, and obviously, that's something that would cost considerable money, would have to factor into the budget, but it's something, too, I would imagine, that would have a certain amount of support on a lot of levels. At the same time, if you're spending money upfront because you're going to save money and have the value of this program that exists.
I will say that the options that we present, it's not going to be about money, because we believe that we can, if, we can put quality programming together for students with disabilities, for preschool-age students with disabilities, if we do it the right way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Pitco.
Okay, I got a lot of questions. I'm just forewarning you.
If it goes a long time, if you wouldn't mind splitting so that other board members can add your choice.
My first question is actually through the chair to Dr. Jones, or even Mr. Mancusi. I'm trying to understand why we don't have the results of the special education audit. And that definitely applies to this.
I'll speak to that. That is scheduled for the September 25th meeting, as I think you know. That is being done also because that is the date that the people who put the audit together is, are available to come and present to the board. So, that's how it got scheduled.
So, my understanding is in the last Board of Ed meeting, Mr. Cullen put into his facilities budget the option for money to move the Walter Fitzgerald campus to the ECC. Now, I am, for the last three years, huge advocate of talking about the ECC capacity issues, but I'm very concerned that the community, and this is to Dr. Jones, is feeling that the push is to move the Walter Fitzgerald campus here, and I hate to use this term, but kick ECC out. And I don't really want to set that precedent, but I feel that that is the rumor and the stigmatist that's moving around here. So, before I move on to these questions, I kind of feel we need to address that elephant in this room.
Yeah, I'm happy to address that. I, right now, I think that's one reason originally, when we were talking about WFC and ECC, which the board has toured both of those facilities, full board, the last month. That's why it's not on here tonight, because we need to separate the two issues. ECC has facilities issues where we have outgrown it. WFC has facilities issues because the facility is in, I don't, disrepair. I mean, it's, we've got to figure something out. Whether those two would fit together or not would depend on this discussion first. So, ultimately, this board is going to decide what solution is best. We're going to work with the staff, whether that is a, you know, and I'll be honest, we were talking about this today, like at Mill Hill. Does Mill Hill have the capacity, when we're trying to talk about a 504, to put preschool bathrooms in there to have a second ECC? Absolutely. This would be the time to have that discussion without huge expense and to be able to help us plan going forward. We just know we have a challenge with facilities. We need to resolve it, and this is not about moving ECC out forcibly. It's about how are we going to solve the problem with 160 kids, and it's probably going to be 200 within the next few years.
So, to follow up with that, we have two schools that we're talking about capacity issues and moving possibly. Is Mr. Cullen looking at other spaces in our town?
For WFC?
For either one.
We're not really looking at other spaces. We have had one conversation about seeing if it's possible to tour that second, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the other Catholic school that's vacated. Thank you, Holy Family, just because people in the community in the last couple of weeks have said, "Hey, have you looked at that building?" We don't even know if it's actually still open, if it's being sold. So, no, at the moment, we're trying to figure out, we're talking about this issue first and how we want to move forward. That's where we are right now.
Well, because in the last meeting, I asked for kind of a timeline on Walter Fitzgerald campus, and you were very clear in that we needed to decide now because we have the lease renewal coming up.
That's correct, and the town actually does that lease renewal, and as soon as we get final word from them, we will absolutely let the board know whether that's a one-year or we have to sign a five-year. But after we did tour with the board, and I can't speak for the board, it's not like you voted, but there was an overwhelming feeling that to be in that building for five more years for WFC was going to be a challenge, so we're hoping for a one-year lease, and maybe, who knows, maybe they would come back and say they were willing to do the upgrades like in electric and other things that they weren't willing to do a few months ago for us. So, until we get that lease signed, and I was hoping we actually might have word tonight. I know Bob Mayer is working on it, so maybe at our next meeting, I'll be able to update you on that lease.
So, my next question is actually through the chair to Mr. Mancusi. When you had your meeting with the staff at the ECC, did you invite the entire staff?
Yes.
Okay, so, did you tell them at the meeting we were decentralizing?
No.
Okay.
I told them there was a facility challenge, and we were going to be discussing.
And they obviously felt compelled to write this letter, send it to the Board of Ed. It got put into the newspaper. Like I said, I have a lot of questions, so bear with me. In case anybody in this room doesn't know, I had a child go through the ECC for two and a half years, and nothing short of a miracle, what you guys did with my daughter. I never imagined, three years ago when I joined the board, that I would be here right now fighting for you guys. I, like many people in this audience, want to see this program stay centralized. I know firsthand what the work they do, and how that impacts our children and future children that will come into our district. I'm concerned that we're looking at a capacity issue when really we should looking at another facility for them. Or in the case of Jessica Gerber, two facilities and have two ECCs. It seems like an awful lot of work is going to go into looking at this programming in different places when we already have something that works. Why change the model? How does that benefit, that energy that you are going to spend when you could be spending focusing on improving other things for our children? I want to see us progress. I don't want to move backwards. And I don't want to speak for the other board members, but I know you all saw the letters that I saw. I'm going to save my questions because I know they'll probably have some, so I reserve the right to come back.
Okay, and also, you can have the right to come back in October and in November, and let's see, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the presentation, and also, thank you for taking the time on the visit. It was, it's been a few years since I was inside the ECC, and it's just an amazing program there. But I want to clarify, I want to take a step back from Mrs. Pitco's point, and just to be clear, because I've had the same impression that many other board members have had, which is, this is a move to decentralize, and I wanted to be, my understanding from this presentation is quite different, is that, and this is what actually I very much appreciate about this, this is a proactive, we're letting you, bringing you in, making you aware that there is an issue. We are now talking with all of the constituencies involved. Decentralizing is one solution, but to me, this presentation makes clear that you have not committed to anything. And obviously, just looking into the decentralizing is, can be very scary, and I'm not taking anything away from that, but I want to be clear that you have not committed to any course of action at this point.
No, that's why, that's why I tried at the very beginning to say, this is really just informational night.
Right.
And then we have to really get in and do the work to be able to bring some proposals to the board on how we're going to solve the problem that we're facing.
Let me put a little finer point on that, if I can, with this question.
Yep.
The, we want to study it, is one question. Is there any hidden agenda that says, yes, we're committed to the decentralization model? That's where we want to end up? Or is this an honest effort on staff to look at a variety of models? One central location, two main bodies, decentralized, look at what is in the best interest of students and what is efficient and affordable and all that? You have an open mind?
Yeah, we do have an open mind, and honestly, I think there are a lot of people in the community that don't even know we had to put a program out at Stratfield last year. I've had several board members that have actually, we get confused because we've got the two gen ed, pre-Ks that are out there. I think there are people in the community that don't even know we've outgrown the facility now, and I think that's why tonight was really important, just to, for people to see the number of children that are in the program.
And I also, given that stance, is that I appreciate that all of these conversations, I mean, from the visits to all of those other districts, meeting with the parents, meeting with SEPTA, the staff meetings, and et cetera, I appreciate that, in fact, all of these visits could pull together some unique combination as a solution to this, as a, because I think we can accept that there is an issue there, but whether it's two ECCs or whatever it is, the point being, right now, there is not a commitment to one plan, and we're going to force that square peg in the round hole. There's.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I do appreciate that. I do appreciate the notice that is here for the board and the thoroughness and the details that were provided. And regarding the numbers, though, I do have a couple of questions. Do those numbers that you gave us, the 96, 103, 115, 120, 128, is that without those Stratfield Burr numbers that are the general ed preschool numbers? So, that 128 does not represent the second Stratfield pre-K? It does not represent Burr?
Yes, it does. There's 25, you're talking about 18, 19 numbers?
Correct.
That 128 includes 25 students in the ECC at Stratfield.
But it does not include the gen ed, which is what you're asking.
It does not include the gen ed, I'm sorry.
So, I just, my personal wish is that we completely stop, those are not ECC students. That is a whole separate preschool program, and I think we do the public a disservice if we, it's one thing when, if we talk about the benefit of a preschool at Burr, get some access to specials. That is a legitimate way to include that in this conversation, but in terms of numbers, that should, that should not be referenced. It should be strictly talking about the students receiving the ECC services.
But those 25 students under, for 18, 19, that.
She's talking about the gen ed, the class next door.
I'm sorry.
Right, so that, in those slides, it had references to Stratfield.
They're not, they're not included.
That's what I wanted to make sure about, thank you. When you talk about 41 new students coming in, I had a child also who was getting some services at ECC, but it was for, it was speech and the social skills class. Are all 41 of those being enrolled in the preschool, or are some of these numbers, because I don't want to assume that all of these are preschool children, because that's not the nature of the work at the ECC.
So, the 41 number were kids that were added to the classroom program over the course of last school year.
Okay, so those were all pre-K children?
All classroom placement.
Okay, but not social skills classroom, because that's separate?
It didn't count students, students that receive itinerant services, that come just for speech or just for social skills are not in any of the numbers that you were provided.
Thank you. Again, just want to make sure these are clean numbers in terms of what I'm thinking. I want, something else I thought that was very interesting was that mention of the ELL services, you know, that obviously, there can be some benefit to these, but I, like many other people, you know, and responding to the letters and having seen the service and having toured the facility with you, it is an amazing, an amazing facility, offering an amazing service, and one of the comments that a member of the public said that really resonated with me is that we talked about the importance of staff collaboration and that team approach and that idea of not just one speech, but that there be many of them there. I thought that was, you know, a very compelling point to the centralized, but I look forward to the future discussions where you get to have all of these conversations, and again, just a, you know, reaching out to the public, a reminder that when parents get that opportunity to have that conversation with you and staff, I hope they avail you of it, because if people can accept that we have a facility issue, then let's get creative about how we can address it, and let's bring the ideas now proactively, so that we can come up with the best way to serve these children. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. A lot of my initial questions, I think, were kind of zoomed under what Mrs. Gerber was talking about, because one of the things that I wrote down several times in my notes prior to and in this meeting was, there's a tone about this conversation reminiscent about when we split the high schools, and going further back when we consolidated the high schools, in terms of instructional efficiencies and the like. So, it appears to me, from both what I hear parents saying and the tone of the presentation, that we're not, we're not saying that the centralized model is failing the kids in any way at all, and we purpose-built a facility for centralization.
The challenge right now is the facility is impacting our ability to program for students.
I understand that point. I guess if we, if we as a district made a decision to provide a centralized ECC service, then the continuation of that would be to find another facility, to. to split the high schools. And I understand that this is a thing that you might want to come back to later, I guess, my, what I'm trying not to take away is that, again, what was said by other board members, we're not, we're not making this decision to decentralize. This is purely a facilities issue, not an educational efficacy issue.
Correct, and we're just starting the conversation with our families.
All right. I mean, I guess I would, to Dr. Jones, at some point in this process, wonder if it's a big thorny issue if there's an administration recommendation as to which model is preferable. I know that there's a million variables at play, but again, coming at it as a, as a non-educator, if there's an advantage one way or another, educationally, I would want to, I would want to know that. I guess, you know, I'm also thinking about if there's any opportunity to expand the space at Ward. And the one question that I had about that, obviously, I've seen the space, it's a fantastic space, the toilets are adorable. Which is not, not a sentence that I would ordinarily say. It occurs to me, it occurs to me, and we've talked about this with, you know, with other building projects in town, if we, even if we added a couple of classrooms, would that make it more difficult? Would that make the common spaces still more crowded? I guess is what I'm saying. You have a, you have a, you have a gym-type room, you have a playground. If we added two or three classrooms at Ward, assuming that we magically found the square footage there, you know, take away parking spaces or whatever, would we be able to increase that space at all without increasing the capacity of everything? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, and if I can, I think that one of your presentations ought to be, what are the options available for expanding at Ward? I think for some of us on the tour, we recognize that there's difficulties with that, perhaps, and so you ought to inform the board of, that you explored that option, and here are the pluses and minuses related to choosing that option.
Sure, I, yeah, I would like to hear about that. I have a basic question that's probably more appropriate in another, another setting, but the one, the one thing, again, as a, as a, as a non-educator, and always curious about these things, we, we talk about how, you know, we, you know, the why now? Why are populations increasing? It's kind of a broad question, if you could give like a 50-word answer, are we dealing with increased levels of diagnosis? Are we dealing with, I mean, I know, you know, it's hard, it doesn't look like it's random variability. It looks like a trend.
I agree, and it's a conversation Dr. Jones and Kristin and I had today. I think our ability, our child find efforts are better than they've ever been, so we're identifying kids a lot earlier than we used to, and our evaluations are really being able to target specific areas of delay and disability. So I think it's, it's a trend that we're going to continue to see, but I think the increase may be due to our child find efforts and our evaluation efforts.
All right, and I want to be clear that I'm, I'm glad appropriate children are being found, so, but thank you very much.
Other questions from board members, Mrs. Jacobson, Ms. Vitali, and Ms. Pitco.
Thank you for the presentation very much. Before I ask my questions, I just wanted to say really briefly, just to everyone who did write to the Board of Education, I just want to say thank you for sharing your profound experience with our education and your children and your deeply personal stories, that for someone who did not have someone at the ECC or children in special education in our schools, I did find them incredibly helpful to me for tonight, thank you, and will refer to them going forward. Mr. Mancusi, you said that in November, we would be presented with some options to consider. I'm wondering if two things will be included in those, that, those options. One will be, will be a recommendation or suggestions for the timeline for change? Yes? There will be included a timeline for change?
We can do that.
Okay. And the second point is, will be there fiscal analysis of those options attached to it?
We can do that, too.
Okay. Sorry, I know it's soon, I'm just wondering on those two things. And then my last comment for right now, for tonight, because I'm very interested in waiting to hear about all of your meetings with parents and SEPTA and whatnot, and what you come back with in terms of the community input we're looking for on this initiative, is possibly even after later tonight, this board may be engaging in a larger and broader facilities conversation for the future of all of our facilities. And I hope that we address in November or going forward, as we specifically talk about the ECC, is how any impact of any future change of that broader conversation may impact any short-term or relatively short-term change for that community that may have to change again, or if that will be protected from such an effort going forward, as we have that broader conversation. So food for thought on that, and what we're gonna, how we're gonna address that. Thank you.
So Tal, do you mind if I interject something at the moment? Thank you. I remind the board that a year ago, when we were having discussions with the teachers' unit on issues that they brought forward, that we had made a commitment to them, that we would address some of the special education caseload, workload issues that they brought forward. There is a direct connection between the conversation that we're having tonight and our commitment to make that happen. And so I have no doubt that in November, as we discuss budget implications for 1920, that the impact of addressing the, that we have more than 1 to 12 in a classroom, that we do not have the 50/50 ratio that is ideal, will all have an impact on staffing. And so in November, I suspect that because November is the time that we look at what program changes are being made that have a significant impact on the budget, I suspect that this will be one of them, and I should remind you that there's a direct connection between our commitment to the teachers a year ago and what we're talking about tonight. Ms. Vitali.
Thank you. To follow up on that, it's, I mean, caseloads affect the children and the families as well, it's not just the teachers. So I think that that is something that is concerning to me, for those of you that don't know, my, I have a little graduate at the ECC, too, I found his preschool picture, and I'm taking it with me tonight just to kind of, you know, keep that focus, not that it's my only driving, I can let my emotions get the better of me, because I look at you all and I thank you. He started middle school, and the transition has gone well, and I credit that to the beginning. So the transition that he made into the ECC served him well, and has been a guiding force for him in the last 10 years he's, he's been in the Fairford Public Schools. So thank you, and thank you to those parents who also did write. I know it's emotional, and you're talking about your children, so I appreciate that candor and that openness for sharing that with the board. So I have some practical, I have a lot of questions, and I'm not going to ask them all for tonight, but I do think it's important that the caseload, I'm concerned about. I do have a question about, if we can fit 25 kids in a classroom, can we fit another teacher? I'd want some more information about how many paraprofessionals are in those classrooms right now, because our teachers need the support, and our kids need to have, you know, the right ratio of teacher-to-student and peer models. I'm having, I'm struggling a little bit with the numbers, as we're moving forward and having these discussions, so much is dependent on the population of kids coming in, and I'm wondering how proactive we're being. Now, birth to three has to notify us three months within their third birthday. Are we trying to get those numbers earlier, so we have a better idea, at least, of the kids that are coming in from that avenue?
So I can log into the state system, and it gives me the students who are within, who are two and a half years and older, and then it just gives me numbers of months coming up beyond that. So it, it's helpful, it doesn't paint the whole picture, because I don't know what the needs of those children are until, really, until we do our own evaluation.
I'm just wondering if you're seeing if the numbers going up, are they going down, are they, I mean, because, you know, with any enrollment trends, to some extent, that might change a little bit in terms of kids just coming through the system.
Every year can be a little bit different in terms of when the birthdays fall, so that's part of what makes it unpredictable, and then there's our ECAT and child find, that we don't know those numbers in advance.
And just some practical questions about Stratfield. Who is doing the PPTs for those children? Are they being done by Stratfield staff? Are they being done by you? In terms of, you know, if the child's in elementary school, the elementary school principal will be leading those. Are you going to Stratfield and doing those PPTs, or are they being done by administration at the elementary school?
Ms. McGoye and I work closely together, so often I go over, but sometimes she'll do the meetings as well.
And the parent, if you can share this information, the parents that like the Stratfield model better, do they have siblings by any chance in the school? Already? Like, I'm just trying to see if there's anything that might have been factoring in--
That did not come up in, in any of the conversations about brothers or sisters. I don't know that, the answer to that.
Well, I just, you know, because it, a favorable answer, or liking that program better, I just want to make sure we're looking at the right data. I mean, I might like sending my child to preschool if I had two other kids in elementary school, it just makes life a little bit easier, you know what I mean? I just don't want, you know--
I, I, I don't, I don't want to mislead the board in saying the ones that had positive things to say liked one better than the other. It was really--
Or just their experience, that they're expensive, they were having.
The experience in that, that program during last school year.
For last, okay. Has Mr. Collin looked at that space in terms of if anything could be done with reconfiguring classrooms in there, so far, and from a facilities issue?
For ECC?
For ECC.
I mean, I, that's not his expertise, I don't want to speak for him, but he's not an architect, but I don't see how we could take that space and cut it up into smaller spaces. That would be a challenge. Because it's really, it's, I mean, the classrooms are, yeah.
Well, I mean, there is, that there's smaller offices, just, you know, I asked for the room inventory during the tour, just to see if any of those rooms could be reconfigured, even for, you know, the short term?
Yeah, and the board will have those, actually Kristin did that for me today for ECC, we're just waiting on Walter Fitzgerald, we'll get that, just so you can see where those small spaces, most of them are like speech and being used for the ancillary services.
And I'll give one more question. In terms of, is there any, have you looked at just the student body and by age? Is it possible, you talk about transition to kindergarten, there being some challenges, maybe? Are there certain four-year-olds that maybe after being at the ECC for a year, might transition into one of the elementary school programs? Have you tried to break up students and seeing if you're going to decentralize any children? Is it based on their need?
Can I answer that, actually? Because I want to, we are just starting this conversation. I mean, and I really, truly mean that, we have not talked about that programmatic aspect, and that, the staff would have to help us weigh in on that, because you wouldn't want to have a three-year-old, then turn around and transition as a four-year-old, and then transition again, you know, as a five-year-old, but that, we haven't talked about any of that. It really is just about what is the problem that we're having, what is our challenge, and we've got to start talking about solutions.
It's just not one problem, though.
I know, well, we know, it's--
No, it's, that's--
Yeah, and that's why we're bringing it to the board, because, yeah, I, I mean, we have concerns about what do we do if at the end of this year, we have 190 students? We need something next September. This is not an issue where you can just keep putting children in a building that's too full, and sure, you can go to three-day-a-week programs, but is that really best for children? I mean, you know, that's not a solution that, just to use the space that we have, so that's how we ended up with Stratfield, I think, is it just, we're growing so quickly. And when you look at those numbers, you see it.
Before I go to you for your second chance, is there any other board member that has questions tonight? And if not, Ms. Pitco.
I wasn't sure which question I was going to lead into, but you just brought me right there. So when we talk about the idea of decentralizing, one of the questions that keeps being brought up by other members of town bodies is, I thought you had a capacity issue in the district, where could you possibly stick other classrooms in schools that would also be ADA compliant? So the question is, if we have a problem come next school year, where could we possibly add another class to fulfill that?
What I can tell you is that I, me alone, nobody sitting at that table, have looked at maps, is it even possible? Because I have to be proactive and be thinking, and right now with Holland Hill will open next year, you know, that'll be a solution. We're talking about Mill Hill, we're debating right now with town bodies that would like that to be 300, I believe the board really wants it to be 504. Is this part of the discussion that has been void to help people understand? We do have facilities issues in certain facilities. We know Sherman, you know, is at capacity. So we've got to look at pre-K as part of that discussion, which it really hasn't been up to this point. We've been talking about capacity issues K5.
I totally understand. I'm talking about for next school year. If we're already going to be at overcapacity, where in the school district can we add another? Do we do it at Burr, where there's already a preschool model? Do we do it at Stratfield, add another class? I mean, if you're trying to stick to this caseload and centralized model, where do we add this class?
Well, I think we do have, we do have the capacity to add, and that'll be part of the conversation. You know, where do we already have pre-K, you know, play equipment around the district? McKinley used to have a pre-K, Dwight used to have a pre-K, we just added brand-new equipment at Stratfield. I mean, we've got things like that, that we're going to have to talk about as part of this conversation, and then collectively, we'll be able to have that as part of the proposal, but we're not ready to do that tonight, because we haven't had the conversations.
Okay. My next question is actually through the chair to Mrs. Bruno. When we were talking about the numbers at the ECC, and you said that the number, the 128, did not include students who were coming in just for services. Approximately how many students are doing that? Because that affects the caseload also.
I would have to count that. I would have to count that.
Okay, can we have that for the next presentation, please? I think that makes a huge impact, because when you're talking about numbers of caseload versus workload, whether it's a speech-language pathologist in our staff, or it's rehab associates that we're getting consultants through, we need to have a realistic number. And that brings me to my next question. Looking at the presentation, and it's, by all means, it's not in front of me, so please, if I misquote it, and the conversation you were just having with Mrs. Vitali, it leads me to believe that some students who get identified and come into our school district are not getting the adequate services because we don't have the staff or capacity to give it to them. That's what I was reading there.
I'm sorry if that's the message that I projected, it was not my intent to at all insinuate that.
I think that's really important to clarify, because I don't know if you're aware or not, but there is a Facebook group, and there are chat groups, and now, what this has done is brought staff and parents together. And, and I'm a huge believer, when it comes to SEPTA and our special needs, parents and students, that we need to have trust, and we need to have transparency, and I don't want anyone to leave this room tonight believing we're not giving services to students.
I'm sorry if I gave anybody that impression. Students are getting the services that they're entitled to on their IEPs.
Thank you. My next question, you said you pulled the, you called the parents at Stratfield ECC site. Did you talk to the staff? The staff, the ones doing, not the regular pre-K program, the ones doing the ECC program there?
All of the district pre-K teachers were part of the meeting we held.
Okay, the one that Mr. Mancusi came to the day after our meeting. My next question, we were talking about that many of the students, when they leave the ECC and they transition into the elementary-kindergarten model, that they're having a difficult time. And there's so much research that I could quote right now, that I could talk about, but I'm going to use my own daughter, because of FERPA violations, I'm not going to talk about anybody else's kid. My daughter had a difficult transition, because she wasn't ready. Developmentally, kindergarten is very structured, is very intense, it's hard enough making new friends, when you spent two years or more with the same group of kids around, with the same staff for two years. So maybe the issue isn't that they're having a hard time transitioning, it's that maybe they're just not ready for it. And maybe what we need, and this, please, can be part of your model, is a FIVES program. For the kids that are just not ready, it's a gap year in between preschool and kindergarten, to give them that extra boost to succeed in our public schools, and maybe in the long run, they'll succeed better as students. It all goes back to early intervention, right? The more early intervention we give to these children at a younger age, the more likely they are to succeed in their own way. It's just a thought for your next model. Thank you.
I didn't see any hands raised, but now there is. Mrs. Jacobson.
Just a quick follow-up on that question. Currently, parents have the option of not enrolling in kindergarten until their children are six, instead of the four and a half to five. So just for my own knowledge, if you are in the ECC-- So, just from my own knowledge, if you are in the ECC, you don't have that option? You must go directly to kindergarten at the five-year age?
That's a question, right?
That is a question.
I think she's asking what we were talking about today.
Okay. So, for kids who are receiving special education services, the planning and placement team makes a decision, that's the team working with the student, including the family, makes the decision about programming for the following year. So, we look at present levels of performance, we look at goals and objectives, and then we look at the setting that those goals and objectives can be addressed in. So, sometimes, they can only be addressed in the preschool setting, sometimes kindergarten, they can be addressed in kindergarten. So, that's a team decision that's made.
So, there are instances when, just because you turned five, you wouldn't necessarily go to kindergarten? You would stay in the ECC for a fifth year, or a third, third year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a case-by-case decision.
Okay, thank you.
And to follow up, parents have, in that decision, parents have the same due process rights as to the decision that has been made. If they think, no, they should, child should be moved forward, they can appeal that. If they think the child should be staying at the ECC, they can appeal that as well.
Is that also, we may write an IEP for kindergarten, and for other reasons, parents may decide to parentially place, non-publicly, for that year.
Any other final comments or questions?
It's not a question, it's just a comment.
Okay.
I really just want to thank, once again, every parent who wrote a letter. As a parent of a child with special needs, it's, it's one thing to advocate for your child in a PPT, it's another thing to write a letter to a Board of Education and be courageous, and talk about your child, and not worry about retribution for your child. That you felt compelled enough in the model of the ECC to reach out to us.
I think I can say one thing for this board. The entire board has been fully committed to serving in the highest possible way the needs of our special education population, whether they're in 12th grade, in high school, all the way down through our preschool program. And I think our board will be putting the needs of students first, when they look at the variety of facility, and programming, and staffing, and financing issues. Financing being the last thing we look at, because the first thing we are always concerned about is the quality of service to individual children. And so, while it may be, in my mind, nerve-wracking to watch us have that conversation, I hope you will know that we will be honestly looking at the various options, and making what we hope will be the best decision for children. So, thank you for coming out. Please keep in touch with us, I'm sure you will, and you'll be welcome back at any other meeting. So, let us move forward to item number 5A. 940, approval of the WFC, which is Walter Fitzgerald Campus Tuition Program. Recommitment motion that the Board of Education approve the WFC tuition program per the August 28, 2018 WFC tuition program update memo. Do I have a motion? Mr. Acer, followed by, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Canelli. Mr. Acer, since you've made the motion, you have an option to start the conversation.
Yes, thank you. So, I had sent a few questions ahead of tonight's meeting, to give Dr. Jones and Mr. Mancusi an opportunity to review before I ask them. The first one regarding this memo, the cost breakdown by student enrollment. I'm curious if you have numbers, enrollment numbers, for the last, let's say, five years, at different parts throughout the year? Where we started, and where we progressed to? So, I can kind of see if there's a trend, or if there's an average that seems to hold true, is my first question.
I do not have those numbers for you tonight. I can get those numbers for you when I meet with Mrs. Donowitz.
Okay. Because when I look at, as of September 7, with 25 students, at a cost per student purely of administrative costs of $35,604, and we're projecting, or proposing, a $35,000 tuition, it raises a red flag to me. I understand, as we look to June of this past year, or this year, we were at 39 students, which considerably drove the cost per student down. But without those trends or averages, I don't feel comfortable making a commitment to a number that is less than where we stand now. So, I wanted to make that point, and I would like to see those numbers regardless of how the vote goes tonight. I am still curious to see that. One of the things I noticed that was not included in here were some fixed operations costs, lease, some other things like utilities, and other costs that would be there regardless of the number of students.
If you look at pages 111 and 112 of the budget book, in terms of the proposed 1819 budget for Walter Fitzgerald, we have a total budget of $1,071,438, which includes every, all costs related to Walter Fitzgerald. I know the number of 25 that we're starting with is, it's low. We've had about 15 or 16 students graduate. We ended last year at 39. I'm shuffling my papers here, because I think I left something on my desk, in terms, I did a cost breakdown to try to help you understand why I think $35,000 is a reasonable base salary to charge students coming from area districts to our program. And remember, that's just a base salary. It doesn't include any costs additional.
You mean, base tuition?
Base tuition, I'm sorry. Yes, and we would charge additional costs based on the student services on IEP, similar to how we do our Project Choice students.
Understood. So, using that $1,071,438 number, taking the 890,113 out, leaves me with approximately $181,000. Is that roughly what you would say the answer to my question would be?
No.
That's the same, that's the same math I did, yes.
Okay.
What I'm saying, if I divided that number.
Which number?
The 1,071.
Okay.
By 25.
Okay.
By 50, because 25 is our current, 50 is our maximum.
Yep.
And then, you just, if we added five students this year, which we're going to add a lot more than five students, I anticipate, because that's a rolling admission, and there's always students that we're talking about to our colleagues in the high schools, that we're struggling with, that might need alternative programming. If we add five students, I think that brings that number, then, to $35,000 per average.
35,71460.
Which is close to the proposed $35,000 base tuition.
Okay. So, I guess, that, that still leads me a little concerned, because I understand the initial intent of this, and wanting to add, you know, seats to out-of-districts. And I think it's awesome, if we're able to offer that to a kid from another town that can't get these services. What I don't want to have happen is us to set a precedent that we're setting this based on what-ifs, hence why I'd just like to see those trends. And without seeing those, it's hard for me to make a decision. I totally understand what you're saying, and I am not against this idea, but I think when this idea was originally pitched, correct me if I'm wrong, the number was considerably higher that was floated out there for tuition.
The number was equivalent to the tuition it would cost the district to send a student to CES.
And was that number around 60?
It was, it was approaching 60,000. I think it was 57.
So, 57,892, so rewind back to a previous board, talking about 57,000, with a base cost of 25 students, of just salary of 35,000. That's a very attractive perspective. Fast forward to now, these numbers do concern me. That being said, I'd like to know, and someone hopefully on this board can tell me, if we were to move forward with this, is this something that we would vote annually on for tuition?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about that today, and really, this tuition, because we haven't had any tuition students, really should be treated just like we do pre-K, should be part of the budget process. So, if the board decides to increase tuition each year, that shows up in the budget, but we just, we haven't had any tuition students there. But that, that would, is how we would anticipate. So, yes, it is an annual approval through the budget process.
And, and is there anything legislatively tied to that? As far as, are there any rules or restrictions or laws about us charging a certain amount, or going up? And let's say we vote, you know, the budget next year went up, you know, 10% for this tuition. Is there anything, from a statutory standpoint, that prevents us from doing that, that you're aware of?
There's nothing that I'm aware of, and I've had experience in my previous district, sending students to other districts for programming opportunities that we did not have. And we paid whatever their tuition was set at, if we wanted to send our student there.
Okay. I apologize, I'm looking at my phone, because I have notes on here, I'm not texting or anything, but, so, so, I'm just going to throw it out there. So, you guys came up with this number of $35,000, and I'm assuming, without giving away any information on this student, you've discussed this with the other district, correct?
The other district is waiting for a final number.
Okay. Have, have you given them any numbers?
The other district knows that it's a board conversation, that we do not have a solid figure.
Okay. So, for me, based on this, again, I like the idea of this. I like the idea of offering a seat, as long as it doesn't affect a Fairfield resident, because I in no way ever want to displace a Fairfield tax-paying resident with a child that needs this program. But if we have the room, we have the capacity, so that goes back to the fact that, so you said that you, so last year, for example, 25 to 39, so that's, that's quite a jump, and you say a maximum enrollment of 50 students. So, is that maximum enrollment based on the current Walter Fitzgerald campus only?
The maximum enrollment is based on conversations with Mrs. Donowitz, what she feels that we can still provide appropriate program for students who attended Walter Fitzgerald.
Without adding staff?
Correct.
And without adding space?
That's my understanding.
So, one of the things, I'm, another reason that I'm a little hesitant to move forward with this at this point, is now, part of the broader conversation is moving the facility as a possibility. So, if we're going to move the facility, we technically don't know exactly where the facility is going to be, and what capacity would be. So, let's say hypothetically, it moves to a different facility, and capacity has now gone down to 40, or 45. And we wind up with 39 students again, at the end of the hypothetical year, and new building and everything. What would our, what would our options be? Is, is the following year, to tell these students that are in there under tuition, that, okay, we've, we've reached our capacity, now you have to go back to where you were? I just, I'm curious.
We've not thought of that at this point. I spoke to the director from the sending district, and let her know that there, that there is a possibility, that the board is looking at the facility, and I don't know what the future of the program in that specific facility is, but in terms of, if we get a facility that can't house 50 students appropriately, or program appropriately for 50 students, then we lower that number. If it's 40, then we don't take any more students. I don't imagine we would then call that district and say, "You can't come here anymore at this time."
However, if there's another Fairfield student that needs that spot, what do you do?
We would have to cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay. So, I think that that is a bridge that's rapidly approaching, and we need to be very careful here. And that's just my, my two cents there. And based on these numbers, while, while I thought the original intention of this was a great idea, and I, and I do support the idea of it, I just, I'm afraid there's too many unknowns for me at this point, and this number being where it is, maybe you could sway me with the data that I've asked for, and if something doesn't happen tonight, or whatever, but I still, regardless, I'd be curious to see that, because this is a great program, and.
I will get that data for you for the next meeting. I will say, since my year being here, this is the first potential student that we're able to add. So, it's, we're not talking about, we've set aside five students. So far, we've had somebody, one student inquire, one district inquire about one student.
Okay. So, so that just, one last thing, then, it just begs to say, then, then the whole philosophy is something is better than nothing, right? Is, is out there? And I'm not saying that in any way, but, but, but we have this opportunity for the student to come, and they're willing to pay, let's say, $35,000. That's more than the zero we're getting now. But again, my concern is that the, the number fluctuation, and really, my biggest concern is the future of the facility, and, and where this kid is coming in. Are they coming in as a freshman, and in, in a year or two, we're going to have to tell them, you know, no? So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Vitale, and Ms. Pitco.
Well, I did actually just quickly go through and came up with the numbers, going all the way back to 2009, 10, up through this year.
Of course you did. Of course, thank you.
You're welcome. So, I just looked.
If you could continue, please.
I just looked at the October 1st, which is kind of the official enrollment number, and then June 1st, or whatever the final of the year. So, 910 was 35 at the October 1st, and 35 at the end of the year. 1011 was 42 and 50. 1112 was 48 and 61. 1213 was 49 and 44. 1314 was 36 and 42. 1415 was 34 and 39. 1516 was 29 and 29. 1617 was 29 and 30. And then, I, I'm a little confused, because the 1718 that we have listed here, you said 25 on September 7. The first number we had was September 29, and that was 31.
For 1819, I was, that number was.
No, for 1718. It says here, September, oh, I see, 2018, got it. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so, 1718 was 31 at the beginning of the year, and I had 35, but you say 39 was in June?
That's the number I was given, yes.
Okay, because the number on the website is 35, so.
Okay.
And then, beginning of this year, I said 27 was the number that we got in this initial enrollment number, that we got in our Friday packet a couple of weeks ago, the first day count.
Okay. I was given 25, I'll check on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, anyway, so those are the numbers.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vitale.
Right now, students at Walter Fitzgerald, they do have the option to go to their home high school to take classes, if it's found appropriate. How would you handle out-of, this out-of-district student, or any out-of-district student? Would they be able to attend either one of the high schools, to access general ed in those schools?
If we felt that it was appropriate for the student, in consultation with our high school staff and the sending district, that would be an option. Transportation to Walter, from Walter Fitzgerald to a high school site would be the cost of the sending district.
And do you have, I know Ms. Donowitz isn't here. Do you have a read on how many students are doing that now? Or going to the high school? I mean, it may not be, you know, something that many kids are doing.
I would have to get back to that.
And that would just be for future, even just future discussions about the facility, if we are looking for different locations, just how many kids actually are leaving and going to either Ward or Ludlow for part of their day would be helpful.
Can I clarify the question? At the moment, in the past history, have we ever had an outside student come to Walter Fitzgerald?
Not to my knowledge.
That wasn't my question. I was just questioning, that students at Walter Fitzgerald don't necessarily need to spend their whole day there? That if they want to take a photography class at Ward or Ludlow, they could go back to Ward or Ludlow to take a class, and then go back to Walter Fitzgerald?
No, I was just thinking that if we've never had an outside student there, then we've never had an outside student at Walter Fitzgerald come to our high school.
I'm just wondering how, what would the policy be, if we're going to be taking? Because it's not really outlined. Would they be afforded that? And as we're looking at costs, you know, it doesn't necessarily.
We would treat that student as if it were, as an in-district student.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, just, as we're looking for a potential new facility, I hope that we just learn from our ECC discussion, in terms of not finding a facility that has some room to grow, and not look for one that has 40 kids, based on the numbers that Mrs. Gerber just gave us for the last five.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Pitco.
Thank you. Mr. Acer actually asked a lot of the clarifying.
Mr. Asa actually asked a lot of the clarifying questions that I had, through the chair, to Mr. Mancusi, I don't know if you're aware, I'm the Board of Ed liaison to the Board of Health, and last night I asked the question if we did have a nurse over at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, and they said, "No, we do not." So, one of my initial concerns of bringing students out of district, even students that go there, is shouldn't a nurse be provided for students who may or may not have a safety plan, or medication, or, just a thought, and that number isn't included in staffing? I was a little, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Asa, I didn't know if you brought this up, but if we go below 25 students, then we pose a risk based on these numbers. And my biggest concern, and I echoed other people saying it, is I don't believe that I can vote on this not knowing a location that we're going to be sending the current students, let alone potential students, since it's such a pressing issue to discuss a lease and a possible, another location for this.
Any other questions from board members? Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just to clarify, to Mrs. Vitali's point, when we reference general ed, accessing the general ed at Ward and Ludlow, just to be clear, Walter Fitzgerald is general ed. It has special ed services on top of it, but just to clarify that, that is a general ed education that we have there. And I've also, and I, on the spot here with this, what is the range of students that would involve either decreasing or increasing a staff member? Because, as far as I can tell, these, this is actually a fairly stable cost to us, because it's one English teacher, one social studies, one math, one science, so there is a huge range there, and, and obviously, kudos to Ms. Donowitz for how she handles the programming and the scheduling there. But this is actually fairly stable. So, when we add a student, plain and simple, we are reducing the per-cost expenditure, it is a plus for the district. I, I'm, so I would be curious if, if, what range there, I mean, even if we dropped to 15, we still need to cover the subjects, we're providing this general education. So, again, I, I've always been enthusiastic about this, with the one caveat, that in no way can an outside district student, you know, negatively impact the education of a Fairfield student, and as it says on here in the bullet point, no Fairfield resident student could ever be denied access to Walter Fitzgerald. I mean, I think we were, we really ripped through this when we did this the first time, and there was a lot of concern, and we were so concerned about those five students, and here we go, we finally have one, that I would not want to hesitate on this vote, I would like to take advantage of this, we have a lot of knowns, and I appreciate the uncertainty of next year, well, at some point, we gotta go for it, and we will take care of next year, because no matter what, we're looking at improving a situation, so, you know, that student will probably be lucky to get in on this, because we'll be, they will be banging on the door next year. So, I, I just view this as a thorough positive, I thank you for your communication with that other district, and with that other student, and I hope we move this forward tonight.
Mrs. Jacobson?
I didn't have any questions on the memo at this point, anytime, other than what other people had already mentioned, but I did want to just question the language of the motion, and I'm just curious, instead of, I'm just curious why it was worded that way, rather than putting in the actual year and amount, rather than referencing as per the memo. Was there a particular reason why I didn't just say that the Board of Education approved the Walter Fitzgerald tuition program for 2000, 2019 to be $35,000? I was just curious if it was worded that way for a reason.
If I can just quickly speak to that, our policy actually says that we don't take tuition students. So initially, it was done by a memo as a special kind of request to the board, so we stuck with that. Ms. Brown did print the policy for me today, so that I can bring that forward to Ms. Max and Cannelly's, the policy, because it'll be an easy change, but it would be nice to see that reflected actually in that policy. But right now, this memo, we're basing this on the last approval that the board made was approving this memo.
As an exception to the current policy.
That's correct.
When, when we adopted this to say, "We'll take up to five students," as a board, we did not look to conform the, the policy we have about not taking students from outside the district to this special ac, issue, we felt that the adoption by the board allowed for the five to come in without necessarily changing the policy, so that we didn't confuse the general public, that all look now they can just tuition their way into it. Mr. Asa, you wanted to ask a question? Oh, Mr., you, you didn't want to follow up on that point? Okay, Ms. Vitali.
Just to thank Ms. Max and Cannelly, I wasn't implying that there was special ed, it was more just the full range of the full scheduling of general education classrooms. And I also, I do support this, I think that, right now, you know, one student, I'm happy to see the interest, I would hope that the sending district does see the space before, I mean, if they haven't already.
Everybody's seen the space.
I think it's a, I'm happy that there's interest, and I think we should move forward with it.
Mr. Asa, you had the question?
Yeah, I was, just wanted some clarification, when, when this was originally explored, and the, the board sense at that time, maybe Mr. Chairman, you can fill, fill me in, was, when it was talked around the ECS tuition and whatnot, these five seats, was, was a lot of the talk around being able to help a kid, but also being an income stream? Can you clarify that?
There are two other board members that were part of that conversation, so I would welcome them to offer their perspective on what the conversation was about. I don't believe we had too much conversation about this being a money-making event, I don't really think so. There was capacity, and the conversation was, if we added five students, would we have to add staff, and therefore costs, and it was represented to us that the staffing that they have currently could serve up to 50 students, we had, whatever the number was, 35 at the time, so we didn't feel as though, this was, this was additional income without additional expense, and, and that was nice, but it was really to serve the needs of student, I think, more than anything else. Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, any comments on that?
I like how you phrased it, except that I would have flipped it. I, I do think we saw this as we had a great resource here, I mean, it absolutely, you know, we talked about the educational opportunity that we, as a larger district, could offer to surrounding smaller districts, but definitely, part of that conversation was absolutely, this is a chance at some revenue here as well, with a program we believe in guaranteeing, ensuring, you know, words the effect of, of students who will not negatively impact this for Fairfield, and, so, absolutely a combination, I would have thought it was a little bit more towards that idea of revenue, but it's certainly both parts were in the conversation.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I mean, I think it was a kind of every little bit helps type thing, I mean, I don't think anyone thought that this was going to, you know, help settle any budget issues, but I, I do think it was just, you know, also, I think the idea that the board would be viewed as looking, you know, there aren't a lot of revenue streams for us to pursue, and this was one of them, so I, I believe that that was the, the mindset.
So, may I finish?
I'm sorry.
So, in, in the spirit of that, I, I like how Mrs. Gerber put it, where it wasn't to, to fill a budget gap or anything, it was that, you know, we'd make a little here or there, or whatever. So that being said, you know, obviously, I never want to make money on the, on the, on a student, but let's put it that, put that way, but, based on these numbers, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we were talking about a $38,000 to $40,000 tuition. And I'm just wondering if, if you think that the, if that would just blow us out of the water, or, because I'm just looking at this, this, this 35, 7, 1, 4 number for 30 students, hypothetically, basically just to have a buffer. I'm not, I'm not looking to make, personally, I'm not looking to have this as a, as a revenue stream, but I just want to make sure that we have our costs covered, and just don't attract from anything, so.
Do you wish to comment? Can I, can I suggest that this might, this question really, I think, gets to Mr. Peterson's question from the prior meeting, to look at pricing per cost, or pricing per market? And, and does the market, would the market support that student still coming?
I will say this, I, I think $35,000 is a reasonable, attractive tuition. It's less than CES, significantly less, and for students who don't need that level of care, and don't need to be out, outplaced, and their district doesn't have the options that we have here in Fairfield, this becomes one. I think also, when parents sometimes unilaterally place their students in programs, you know, sometimes unilateral placements, there are programs whose tuitions are around or less than $30,000. There's many that are, are more, but there are some that are around that figure, that figure. There's no outplacement that is, is close to that figure.
Ms. Pitko. Any other questions, Ms. Asa, or, Ms. Pitko?
I was actually one of the Board of Ed members who was on the board at the time that we voted the initial five, and I remember telling the board at the time that I have close friends who run Alpha in Stratford, and run Milford Academy in Milford, and they had always looked at tuition students as an option to save their programs, should their enrollments go down, and to subsidize costs to do so. But I'll just reiterate that, until we know the location, I'm uncomfortable inviting another student into the district when we don't even know where we're going to house them.
I'll make my comment, and then ask if there are any final comments before we act on the motion. I, I see this as a way to serve students in need with very little impact on us. If our average was 35, and we have 50 as an, as a capacity, that one student, I don't think will cause a problem this year or next. I agree that we ought to be looking at a facility that could serve, I'll say, the 50, that is maybe the maximum average that we might be thinking about, and should not be looking at just, let's say, do the bare minimum, and so even if we find a new facility, I think there would be room for that one student anyways. 50 is not the capacity of the facility, it's the capacity that the staff feel they can deliver the best quality services. And so, just as one year, up to 61 students were in that facility, the facility fit them, it just, it was maybe a little bit of additional staff to get to that service level that they, they require. So I'm supportive of this, as I have been in the past, because there are a lot of what-ifs that you can say, but right now, for this year, and I think the next couple of years, I think there's capacity for that one student. Any final comments from board members? This is a voting item, so therefore I'll go to the public and see if there's any member of the public who wishes to make a comment on the motion that's in front of us. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll repeat the motion that the Board of Education approved the WFC tuition program per the August 28, 2018 WFC tuition program dash update memo. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Leeper, Ms. Vitali, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, opposed? Ms. Pitko, Mr. Asa, the motion passes 7 to 2, thank you very much. New business, facilities discussion, magnet program.
No, board goals.
Oh, sorry, I've got too many notes all over this area. Board goals. I'm sorry, we...
Before we even get started?
We're following the agenda, so you don't want to talk about the WFC, and you want to ask something about an unrelated issue, not the board goals? Can, can I put the board goals on the table and then call on you?
There's no motion.
No, but I mean, if it's about board goals...
What, what I'm asking is, I think we need to postpone something. And so, I'm, before I pick one, I was looking for your guidance, Dr. Jones' guidance, that of the next three items, what really has to get moving on tonight, and it's quarter after 10, I don't know if Mr. Cullen is still here, I'm still waiting for that summer work update, I mean, we have a lot still to go on the agenda, and these are, I consider three actually really important items, so, that's why, I'm not sure if this was the moment, but I would like to make a motion to postpone to September 25th, one or two of the next three items on our agenda, but before I make that motion, I would defer to the Chair and Dr. Jones on where could we, what's most flexible here.
I think what will happen to respond to that is that, on September 25th, the agenda will be full enough that at that meeting, you'll say, "I need to vote to postpone something from that meeting." So if I suggest that you say, "Let's postpone something to the next available date, and then we'll look at how the schedule works out to see if we can time it accordingly."
Agreed, I, I knew the 25th was looking...
Yeah.
Heavy, so completely agree, but that's again, where, before I make the motion, I would like your input on...
Maybe the way to answer it is, is there any board member that sees an item on here that says, "Yeah, I can postpone discussion on that particular item for a while, until the October meetings?"
I, I guess one question is, the, the one thing, the facilities discussion magnet program, is that going to be a detailed discussion? Because we didn't get any advance information on that, so I have no idea what the topic is going to be.
Yeah, I talked about that with the, with our finance committee, and I've had individual discussions with several of you when I, when I had my independent meetings, and had some good feedback on that, so I think it will be maybe 10 minutes, I mean, it's, I'm trying to keep it concise, and that was, again, thanks to the committee, they felt like we didn't need to get into heavy-duty videos and websites, but, on the presentation, the link is there, said that if people really want to go home and watch a video about, for instance, PYP, they would be able to do that, so I think it'll be fairly quick.
Any other issues that you would be comfortable moving to another meeting?
I would be comfortable moving the board goals discussion to an October meeting, personally, I feel like that could be a lengthy discussion, and I'm really interested in hearing about some of these other agenda items that might be more time-sensitive.
Any thoughts on this side of the table relative to issues to move forward? Mr. Peterson?
Just, I tend to agree with Ms. Leeper on that issue of board goals.
And Mr. Asa?
I agree as well.
And Ms. Jacobson?
Me too.
Okay, so I think you have some guidance, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone, and now I need your phrase, Mr. Dwyer, because I gave you the freedom, to postpone to an October meeting, our discussion of board goals?
Sure.
Okay.
Second? Ms. Pitko, you're seconding, okay. Any discussion on the motion to postpone, it's an administrative action, so we don't go out to the public on that, if there's no discussion, up there is Mr. Asa.
Just a quick thing to Dr. Jones, are you okay with that? Because I know board goals had some important stuff tied to some other items.
I'll, I'll answer from my perspective, Dr. Jones might have her own perspective. The, the survey results from the 21 that we have clearly showed that the facility issues are going to surface as a board goal. Dr. Jones indicated in the last meeting that her staff, as you see from the ECC discussion, are already at work, looking at the various options on all of the facility issues. So, I don't think if we wait another meeting to actually formalize it, the, the goals that are based on the results that we have, so my guess is the first or second or third goal is going to be pretty clear, I think it'll be the fourth or the fifth goal that we might have some debate on. Does that answer your question? Did, Mr. Peterson, you, raise your hand? No, okay.
Dr. Jones have anything to add?
So, Dr. Jones, do you want to make any further comments?
No, I mean, the memo that I provided trying to help bring the goals in, was because there was only one goal that had any consensus, and that was the one that had the facilities.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to postpone to a meeting in October, the topic of good board goals, please, it's unanimous, thank you very much. So, on to magnet program, facilities discussion, 10 minutes, I'll time you.
And anyone wants a restroom break while I bring up the computer?
Yeah, we won't recess, because I'm, my guess is by the time she brings up the computer, you'll be back. The only reason we'd recess is if five of you walked out of the room, then we would not have a quorum.
Just a quick question, are we going to get a handout on this?
We can provide this to you afterwards.
Okay.
The, our practice has generally been to not only provide the board, but to post these presentations on our website, tomorrow... if you check, you'll find the ECC presentation on the website, and my guess is you'll find this presentation on at the same time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay. So why don't you continue?
Do you want me to wait until they come back, or?
No, I think because of the time, we really need to.
Okay.
Move forward.
Tonight, we are discussing the intra-district magnet discussion. And again, I know you haven't set your board goals, but this one was consensus from all the different goals that were put forward. I think that we need to answer the question, why are we having this discussion, just like we did with the ECC discussion? And it's because we must explore, this magnet option is part of our racial imbalance plan as it was presented in 2016. And it's really looking at that intra-district programmatic options. So right up at the top, you'll see, that's the language from the plan. When we talk about inter-district versus intra, and this is just more for the community, inter-district is where we would take students from other communities. Intra is where it is only our Fairfield Public School students and families, and intra is what our board put in the plan. We also, when you look at a magnet school, that would be an entire facility. A magnet program would be one or two classrooms within an existing school. So again, this board, and it really was the previous board, that put these in the plan. It's intra, open only to Fairfield students and families, and a magnet program, which is one or two classrooms within an existing school. And I know some of you have actually talked about magnet school, but what's really in the plan is the program. This is just a general kind of what is in Connecticut, as we've done the homework and gone out and looked. This actually, it was a live website, and we were having trouble because it was a Connecticut portal, so it wasn't allowing us to connect. But this is about five pages long of just all the various magnet schools. It's difficult to find a magnet program where you have one or two classrooms. Most of them, these are all actually magnet schools. But there are a lot in Connecticut. When you look at the magnet schools in Connecticut and looking at the options, I think it's important to note, again, the reason we were looking at this had to do with racial imbalance. So when we got our updated memo at the end of the school year from the state of Connecticut, there are only three school districts who show up on that list as far as, from the eyes of Connecticut, having a racial imbalance. And that's Greenwich has two schools, West Hartford and then Fairfield. And the interesting thing is, out of those four school sites, three of them are magnets. So I think it's just important to note that when you look at Greenwich, you have an IB World School that opened in 2009, and they also have Hamilton Avenue, which was a STEM Academy that opened in 2012, and West Hartford has an IB World School. And it's interesting that both of those concepts are concepts this board has just talked about from the previous board and then also as I've had individual conversations with all of you. So the two themes that emerged when we did the survey last year, it was a very, very slight survey, we sent it out to our families, just in general, if you, are you interested in a magnet school? Is there any interest? If you are interested, which one would be, you'd be the most interested in? The two components out of the survey was STEAM Magnet and the International Baccalaureate. And I think overwhelmingly, the board said, I'm not sure that everybody really even understands what an International Baccalaureate is. People, I think, know that Greenwich's program is highly regarded and have probably heard more about that program when you talk about International Baccalaureate. So International Baccalaureate is a primary years program when you're talking about elementary. It is a IB, World Schools are K-12. There are only seven school districts in the country that have a K-12 program where it's at all levels. PYP is what it's, the short term for primary years program, is the program for elementary that we would be looking at. The challenge is, would they even let us do an actual program according to Connecticut terms, like in two classrooms? More than likely, and the answers I've been able to get so far, is that it would have to be a whole school site. And when we wrote the plan, we were specifically looking at McKinley. So when you talk about the learner profile, and again, I'm going to try to go fairly quickly, it really, the learner profile is part of the International Baccalaureate K-12. So you have systemic language that everybody uses. Those are the 10 tenants, and they pretty much are posted in every classroom in your district if you're an IB World School District. It's very similar to what you're seeing emerge with Vision of the Graduate, where districts are choosing, and like our district has just done, six tenants. I firmly believe the work of Vision of a Graduate has come out of the International Baccalaureate model. You started seeing Vision of the Graduate back in about 2010, and a lot of the tenants of what states are doing look like IB. So we're doing a lot of this already. IB, and I put down on the bottom, is really just about great teaching. And I'm not going to show you this whole video, I'm just going to give you, if the sound will come on. Let's see.
Under the PYP program, students are self-directed in their own manner.
I think the most important thing is that children feel themselves as inquiries and problem solvers. We're not creating machines to form knowledge and skills and know how to use them. They know how to identify problems and how to use this skill and knowledge to solve the problem.
The flexibility of the PYP provides lots of room to help the students to inquire into the topics they're learning.
Using what you know about children order intras, that is so important because the children feel that you are really acknowledging and respecting their interests, and then they will feel more a part of the learning community.
We utilize the local resources and also we try to put as much culture in the program as possible.
We do think that the environment is the third teacher, the teacher's plan has to see what kind of problem.
And I'm actually going to stop, it's only about another minute or two, but again, when I talked to the committee, they said, if anyone wants to go out and watch the rest of that, certainly they can. But what you see is, it's really about great teaching. And you could go all across Fairfield and see inquiry. We talk about it every day in our schools. I do think the one thing the International Baccalaureate does is the international aspect and also the environmental. They are very, very strong in the curriculum on the environmental aspect. So to become a PYP school is a long process to be authorized. You start out at the beginning just requesting, basically, are they willing to accept you, you know, as a school, as a system? And then you go through a very long request for candidacy. It takes, on average, it's about three years before you become an authorized International Baccalaureate World School. Along with that, there are costs, of course, and so that would be consideration for us. Your annual dues never go away, and that's what it is this year, is at $8,520. Level one training is the beginning training for any teacher who is in a school that is an International Baccalaureate PYP school. And just to take the course is $925. So then you also have to think, and that's the only price you see up there, is the course offered locally, where teachers can go without having to stay in hotels or travel? Those costs can add to that. And if you took a building with about 64 staff in it, that's about $59,000. That's an ongoing cost, because after you, you must complete Level One, you must complete Level Two by the time they come back again as part of that authorization. And every teacher you hire in your school has to go through that training. So it's not quite as large after you go through the initial training, but it's a large commitment to professional development. So just your Year One fees are about $67,000. Then you also would have curriculum writing costs, and that's enormous in an International Baccalaureate school, because you are rewriting your curriculum. It would look different than what we have in Fairfield Public Schools right now. So you'd want at least $20,000 to bring teachers in for about 20 hours of just work on what they call planners, PYP planners. We also were looking at the STEAM Magnet, and there are STEAM schools all across the United States, and I'm not going to open this link up for you, but in Baltimore Public Schools, they have a great program where they've tied to John Hopkins. They've done a lot of work around the Baltimore area. There's also Code to the Future, which, again, you can open this link up and read as much as you would like. Year One for Code to the Future is about $120,000, but the training is extensive. Every teacher is trained just like they are in IB, only it's very focused on, Code to the Future is very focused on the coding aspect and computer science. And there's some phenomenal schools in Boston that have used this model. Again, they're across the country, supported, you know, by the White House, by all of the major kind of technical organizations that are out there for K-12 are very supportive of Code to the Future. But there is a cost, and that cost really is going to the training aspect. The other idea, which Ms. Leeper mentioned at our last meeting, and I'm kind of throwing this out very quickly, is, is there something that's kind of in between those two components that we could do in Fairfield? And this would take, again, a lot of discussion and thought, would be something like the Elementary Advanced Math Academy. That is where we could actually have a program, because we own it, we design it, so we're not having to go to an organization like International Baccalaureate meet their criteria. That is food for thought going forward. So what would that look like? And again, this is very cursory, we'd have to come back to you. Maybe it is fourth or fifth grade only at McKinley. And why a math academy? Because that's probably the thing I hear most from our elementary families, that they are very interested in, like, advanced mathematics. So would there be an interest? We don't know if we don't ask, but there may be an interest. The other thing that's different about doing an academy versus something like a magnet program, if you go down the avenue of International Baccalaureate, it's an enormous commitment for a long time. You can't go into IB, train your entire staff, and then say, wait, we've changed our mind. It's a big commitment, and there's nothing wrong with it, it's just a big commitment. Something like an Advanced Math Academy, if you start it with, for instance, fifth graders, you kind of have that trial year, where if you don't really like the way it looks at the end of the year, they've all moved to middle school, and you're not committed to longer than a year or two, depending on what you're doing. Certainly, the cost to do something like that is much less, because the professional development is something that we would do ourselves, the teacher planning, what would that look like? And transportation costs are something that would have to be discussed. There would be a lot of thought that would need to go into that. So when I look at what's next in our whole magnet discussion, I was hoping you would have this golden night, but, so I'm just going to pretend like you do, but when you look at a magnet program, and again, this comes out of conversation with a lot of you in our individual meetings where you've kind of shared thoughts, when I look at a magnet program, I'm going to give you what my recommendation would be, and the board may or may not agree with that, I would not recommend that we move forward as part of our state plan to solve racial imbalance. As I've really looked at it, I've looked at, Greenwich is still on that list, and they've done phenomenal work with magnet schools. I think that's the wrong reason to do a magnet school, so if that's why we're doing it, I don't think it's going to work in Fairfield. And I would say that we, for something like International Baccalaureate, and I didn't mention this before, but my previous district, I took us through authorization, and we were one of the seven, you know, K-12 districts. I think it's wonderful. But it also has to come from the staff. So to me, if McKinley came knocking on our door as a staff and said, we would love to be an International Baccalaureate school, that would be the reason why I think we would want to move forward, or our community says we really want one of our schools. But I think it needs to be more grassroots, not from the board down, because it's really not going to solve the problem, I believe, after we've been able to study that. I think in the Advanced Math Academy, again, I think staff, I would like for staff to continue to explore that and bring back something to the board. We have ran some calculations, so if our advanced math students came from all of our 10 other schools, and we did have one or two classes at McKinley, just the natural balance would help bring the percentage down. It doesn't mean that it's going to be at 20% or even 23, but it definitely, I think, would help in the long run when you start looking at some of the challenges we have, like with redistricting. You know, how many students actually would have to move in the future? We're talking about facilities and all the different issues that we're dealing with. I think it could be a positive program for the district, but again, it would take some staff thought. So that's what my recommendation is when we're looking at a magnet program or an academy going forward.
Thank you. 12 minutes, I think you did very well. The really purpose putting this on is to say, we are exploring under the requirements of the racial imbalance program so that we can report next spring. We looked at a variety of issues. I think you have in front of you a recommendation that the staff will be pursuing that third option more so than the first two. So if there's a specific comment that you want to make, or we can move on to the district improvement goals, so any comments that people wish to make? I have one. Do I have any other board members that wish to comment at this time? Four. Okay, we'll have extended conversation. I have no doubt that as we get to about 10 of 11, I'll need a motion. Mrs. Jacobson?
I'll wait for Dr. Jones to get back. So as you're moving forward with, are we going to discuss the different options, or are we just automatically moving forward with that one option?
Well, for me, unless the board says, we don't like any of the options, forget looking.
No, no, I'm just saying, there was three options presented, and it sounded to me like what the conclusion was is that you were moving forward with just the third option.
Correct.
That's my recommendation. But that doesn't mean that you agree with me. So if you say, we really want a magnet school.
Yeah.
So we should talk about the magnet?
Comment.
Okay. Okay. So I guess in terms of the third option, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand why we wouldn't want all of our students to have access to advanced math at the elementary level, rather than a select few who would be bussed over to a school to acquire that access.
I think we do want all of our students, we want differentiation. I think what we're talking about are those students who have this real love and interest in something like this, because it's choice. Now, we may have trouble filling a class, or you may have 80, and that would be very telling for us, but I think it's, you're talking about those students who truly are, they love this, and they'd love to have math all day long and are woven into everything they do. And it would have to look different than what we do just on an everyday curriculum, and that's why the curriculum writing piece is in there, for professional development, because teachers would have to develop that.
And the criteria for selection into something like that would entail what?
Well, I think that's what part of the conversation is tonight, do you want us to continue to explore that? Because that's, we've had those preliminary conversations, very preliminary, but do you want us to bring some of that back to you? Is it something that even piques anybody's interest or a majority of the board?
Okay. I guess my concern, just out of the gate, without hurrying more, would be a concern about equity between all, for all of our kids and at the elementary school level. Without, here, there may be something that I'm missing in it all, in one content area over a more generalized, say, something environmental, like the more STEAM, which encapsulates many more subjects, or I understand the difficulty with IB, but it is really good. So that's just my concern, one subject, equity, parity, access, that kind of issue with one, with just the math academy. But I'm certainly happy to hear more about that.
I'm definitely excited to continue the conversation on this idea. I've been a huge proponent, advocate for IB, I think it's wonderful. But again, I do think that's a huge undertaking that we really don't have a lot of community demand for. So I would hate for the board, I think they've been talking about, my understanding anyways, is the board has been talking about magnets for many years, and nonetheless, still not a lot of community enthusiasm for the idea of a magnet. And when we looked at that list, those districts that had implemented magnets had not, and IBs, had not solved their racial imbalance plan, or racial imbalance. And I also think it's interesting that Dr. Jones mentioned that we've actually embedded a lot of the different IB principles into our current curriculum. So we can continue to take the best of IB without the formal process, which it sounds like our staff is doing, which I think is wonderful. And similarly, have rolled out three to five STEAM in all of our elementary schools, which I think gets a little bit to what Mrs. Jacobson was talking about, that we want to make sure that all of our kids have equity and access to great, high-level programming for all different subjects. I view the possibility of this math academy as filling a void we currently have in our district, where we don't have highly specialized opportunities for certain groups of really individualized learners, and that it's something that there has been community demand for. And I think it will be interesting to continue to explore what that could look like. I think that potentially using gifted and talented scores as one starting point to launch off of what kind of kids would maybe be interested in this type of program is also something I'd like to learn more about.
Mrs. Maxon Cunnily, followed by, Mr. Peterson, you had your hand up, right? Followed by Mr. Peterson, Ms. Pitko, and Mr. Asa.
Yes, through the chair to Dr. Jones.
Yes, through the chair to Dr. Jones. What do you consider to be the staff time to do the type of research that you're talking about, considering that we're about to launch into the whole budget cycle, which we know takes far more hours behind the scenes than anyone gets to see? So to have this put on the plate as well, and I ask that from the perspective of being wildly enthusiastic about the idea, however, what would be that impact on staff time?
I mean, I see it as manageable because I don't think it's going to be any different this year than it would be next year. So if we want to explore it, it's having a lot of conversations. I think we'd want to have conversations, obviously, with our math specialists, with all of our elementary principals, with our directors, much more in depth than what we have now. All we've done right now is say, hey, we're going to be talking about this. So, you know, I think it would involve conversations and meetings that are already scheduled. And then it's running some data and looking at, you know, how many kids do we think might be interested? I think we would want to poll even our families. You know, if you asked your fourth grade parents, would they even be remotely interested in it? And if it comes back where nobody's interested, that would be very telling. If we, if it comes back and there's a lot of interest, then that would also tell us that maybe it's worth looking at.
Okay, so just very quickly.
Very manageable, I think.
Okay. So thank you for that. I acknowledge all of Mrs. Jacobson's, you know, concerns about this, but you're looking for direction right now, and so I would be very interested in this. I've heard, as have you, that, you know, that there's a crying need for this. Now, whether someone actually would go with it, you know, I think before it goes to any survey, there will need to be more details. It has to be far more than just a name, so that they have a sense of how is this different? But I do appreciate that this conversation, while it's prompted by the racial imbalance plan, that this is not a conversation anymore due to that, because I think we'd be kidding ourselves if we thought we were somehow going to be different from Greenwich or West Hartford, and that this was going to solve the problem. That would be throwing money at something in a way that I would consider fiscally irresponsible. So I'm grateful that that is out there, that we are separating those two, and I do look forward to hearing more information about this.
Ms. Peterson.
Really, just to second a lot of the points that were being made. I do appreciate Dr. Jones noting that these, the magnet schools and not even magnet programs have not been successful in moving those other districts away from imbalance situations. Useful, it's useful to see that information. I am in favor of the Advanced Math Academy. I think it's a fantastic idea. Some part of me weeps that we're not talking about an advanced humanities academy. I think that we would be better if we had a bunch of kids translating to Bill of Gallica as they did for centuries, but that's my idiosyncratic opinion. But I do know, you know, I have friends and family, I have heard numerous tales of kids not being challenged in this area, so I would, I would be very happy to see that go forward.
Ms. Pitco.
I helped develop the gifted program in my previous district. I just feel that in our 11 elementary schools, we would be better served to spend the money rather than busing students to one central school, but promoting the gifted program in those schools, focusing on the math and science to help the school, the students that you clearly are identifying. I think we would reach more students. I think that math is a huge component in a student who wants to be successful and eventually end up in AP classes or honors. To then take all of them from each of the schools and bus them to one location, it just doesn't seem like a feasible way to spend our resources. I would rather promote them in each of the elementary schools. Provide an adequate gifted program to promote the math, the science, the humanities. Have them do a model UN. Have them engage in activities that they choose, just like an NGSS model, where NextGen promotes student-driven learning.
And Mr. Asa, I think you raised your hand.
I think I might be in the minority here, but I'm not in support of this at this time. I think that this whole discussion centers around facilities discussion of the magnet program to solve racial imbalance. And now we've brought up a new subject, which I really, you know, think that might be worth exploring down the road. But right now, focusing on the racial imbalance and the magnet program, I think we've kind of grown a new flower out of this, that I think we've got a lot of other things on our plate. And while I respect the idea that you think the staff can manage it, it's also going to have to be a lot of board discussion, public discussion, and everything. And I think we just need to focus on a lot of the other things that we have on our next 10 agendas before we get, delve into this.
Any other comments that board members wish to make at this time? I see no hands up. There seem to be at least two verbal concerns about moving forward on this. There seem to be several verbal concerns to say, if the staff can do the research, do the research. I believe that the Finance Committee has at least started looking at that, and I presume will continue to put that on your agenda, and that it won't come back to our board until either the staff or the committee say, we have a little few more answers, so let's bring it back onto the full board agenda. But that's my guess as to where the board is at the moment. Ms. Leeper.
From my perspective, I guess I'd want to know now if the board does have any desire for the Finance Committee to continue to explore this, because if it does not, then I don't want to continue to waste anybody's time with the discussion and research and the like.
So I heard two board members say, kind of stop. But I didn't hear anybody else say that. So I think Ms. Leeper is looking for a direction that says it's worth her committee time, and the staff think it's worth their time to continue to explore. Is there more than just the two who definitely say, we have more important things to look at? Ms. Jacobson.
I mean, if I'm making that call now, I would say, I tend to agree with Mr. Asa, that we have a lot on our plate, and that I would hope that, I mean, it's, the Finance Committee can look at whatever they want, but I was hoping that the Finance Committee would be looking at additional revenue sources, not other ways to spend on something new when we have so many issues to already address. So, I mean, I'm happy to look at more research, but if Mrs. Leeper, it's helpful for her to have an answer tonight so that they're not wasting time, I think it is probably, we should do that for her and give a direction one way or the other. So if I'm going to make that call right now, I would say, we have a lot to take care of. So, and issues to, so I would say, let's not dilute that any further right now.
So three, and I assume that you can multitask. Ms. Vitale.
I support the Finance Committee looking into this further. I think that our committee is to make sure that we are spending money wisely, and I can think of no other way of spending money wisely than to looking at ways to better educate our children. If staff feels comfortable that they can fit it in, then I'm going to trust that they have a sense of what their timeline is. A lot, the board has a lot to do with facilities. A lot of that is not being done by central office staff. We're not asking Mr. Cullen to, you know, look at the math academy, right?
Do you feel you have direction?
Sure. I'll just add that if, I just wanted to clarify also, are we no longer pursuing the discussion of a magnet school? Have we crossed that off the list of things that we had to tackle?
I didn't hear anybody disagreeing with the superintendent's recommendation. Is there anybody disagreeing with the superintendent's recommendation? So I, you know, we never vote to not do something.
Right.
But we're following the superintendent's recommendation, so I believe that the answer is yes.
Had we approved one of those board goals, that would be one of the four things that is actually off of our plate, correct?
That will guide us for the next meeting when we address that.
And.
Yes.
Just not to put too fine a point on this and advocate too hard, but this could also potentially be quite a large cost savings in comparison to a magnet program. And also, I feel like after just having our centralization conversation for our ECC, that could also be an interesting lens with which to view a program like this through, for these types of students.
Thank you. Ms. Maxon-Cannelli, did you have your hand up?
Just to be certain, have we covered what needed to be covered for the, regarding the racial imbalance plan? That the extent of the discussion that we have had, does that cover us?
Yes.
Thank you.
No further hands up. We'll move on to the next item, which is 6B, the District Improvement Plan update. Dr. Jones, this is a first read, so we'll have another bite at the apple at another meeting. Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a motion to extend to 11:30. Is that legitimate? 11:45 then.
Motion to extend to 11:45. Let's see if we can't beat that, but a second for the motion. Ms. Leeper, any discussion? If not, all in favor of extending the meeting to 11:45, please raise your hand. Ms. Leeper, Ms. Vitale, Ms. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Jacobson, Mr. Peterson opposed? Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxon-Cannelli? The motion passes 6-3. So, 6-3 motion to extend.
6-3, passed. 6-3, it passed.
Yeah, yeah, 6-3. District Improvement Plan, this is a first read, so I'll ask Dr. Jones to lead us through it.
I'll just, this is the same document you've seen, obviously, several times, but it kind of melted the two together that you saw with the crosswalk document, and then also the vision of the graduate. So on page six, we will be asking the Policy Committee if they can add these two, the new items, into the educational goals, because that is actually in policy on page six that I put in yellow for you. Those were new, and that is directly out of the work we've been doing for the last couple of years. I'll bring your, draw your attention to page 15. Again, on the pages after that, everything is, should not be new. That is the Vision of the Graduate section, which you first saw last June, and then you saw again, I believe, at our last meeting. But, so it's not new to the board, but we wanted it to actually, you know, to fit in with the work that we're doing after you looked at the crosswalk document. On page 19 starts the Student Performance Indicators, and what you'll see there, page 20 hasn't changed. On 21, I've tried to provide, these are all the difference indicators. What I had given you previously in the work plan was a shorter list, and it was really, these are the focus of the, the shortlist you saw, the things we will have, like in our October presentations for you. This is a little bit more comprehensive. So as I went back, and I had said I would kind of give you the crosswalk for the data, when we published this, we obviously would have the right side, but we went ahead and put both of these on here so that you could see. We are still doing the post-high school student survey. That's not, you know, that hasn't changed. Matter of fact, we just got the results this week, so we'll have, have that coming back to you probably at next month's meeting. The graduation rate, some of these reporting, the way they're reported from the state, has changed since 2015, so the data we'll bring to you is the data the state provides for us, so that we're not hand calculating, kind of messing with numbers. I want to make sure what we bring to the board are numbers that you could go out and find if you are a community member. Our AP scores, again, those are going to be as we get them back. They are breaking those down a little bit more for us, and you'll see those coming to you. Obviously, the PSAT, we're doing the, we have the PSAT 10. We just got those scores actually this last week, so you'll be getting those. S-BAC, Academic Expectations, that's new. The CTE and ACTFL. We, our CTE enrollment is not a focus as in more important than the arts or anything else that we do. So what we do is we're monitoring that as for enrollment, for staffing, but it's really making sure, you know, our choice and voice for our high school students is very diverse. And so we're, we'll continue to bring all of that to you. The calculus participation, Paul Rasmussen obviously keeps up with that. Extracurricular participation, we do not have a good data system right now, but we know that's something we would like to have going forward, but we don't have it right now. CMT, no longer a state test. Physical fitness, that's part of state reporting, so that's not changing. The Common Assessments, those we use for staff and for teaching and learning. We don't feel those should be published when they're common assessments that we're using for teaching. STAR reading, and I Ready Math is now STAR Math, which that changed, I believe, in 2016. STAR Early Literacy is a new assessment that is for our kindergarten first graders. That's actually the early childhood version of STAR. We implemented that, started that last year. Attendance, those, again, come off state reporting. Our Next Generation Assessment will start this current year, will be the first year, we'll get results for science. And we also have our student growth profile from state reporting, where we're very focused on the growth model, and that was brand new from the state this last year. So when you have your presentation in another month, I think it's next month or October, you will see all of that. So those kind of give you the crosswalk of what's new, what's old, and then, again, this is what you've already seen, starting in June, and we've just put the Vision of the Graduate into the plan.
So as I look at this, we do have to have the Policy Committee officially act on the policies. In the balance of the document, if we adopt the document as presented, we essentially would be agreeing to add the Vision of the Graduate Document 1A as part of the District Improvement Plan. We'd be acting on page 21, which says, here's an updated list of the data that we're tracking, and you'll see on the list the reasons why things changed. Page 29 is the two action steps that, that last, last year, I think, were added, one on facilities and one on safety. I think those are the principal changes, that if we adopt the plan, we would be adopting it, adopting those specific changes. Comments or questions from the board on this document? Ms. Vitale.
Just under some of the specific actions, how much attention should be given to making sure that they're accurate for where we are right now? For example, on page 25, 1-2, implement a K through 12 sequence of experience supporting the development of skills leading to a successful capstone experience at the high school level. Now, you know, we don't necessarily know that every high school student is going to be, until we, you know, approve the graduation requirements, whether or not that's going to be a requirement. So should it stay in here?
I kept it because the crosswalk document that I provided to the board has that updated where we're doing. If you go back and look at that, it talks about the graduation requirement and the mastery, which is actually in the staff work plan that the board has seen. This is the original language, since that was the intent, but in a work plan, you'll actually see the updated language.
And the other, there was another page about bring your own devices for technology. On page 28, 4.8, implement a consistent bring your own device program throughout the school system that makes most effective use of the technology. I'm assuming, based on our presentation, that we're going to get our next meeting, that might be changing, just in terms of how our approach is now that high schoolers are going to have Chromebooks. So I don't know if this needs to change, or if it's fine the way it is, or just what the board thinks about that, or some guidance from you, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, I think if you go back again and kind of look at that crosswalk document, that's helpful, because it takes the new and puts it under the old. We still have bring your own device, and we still have some students who are probably going to choose to still do that, so that hasn't gone away. We've just enhanced it, and it falls, and I actually have it if I need to pull it out, but where the innovative learning falls, under here.
So just really view them together, all right.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
A couple of things. So looking at the first article, first of all, there were a couple of data points, and there may have been more. These quickly caught my eye that we're missing were any reference to the school climate survey and the world language credits. Were two things in the District Improvement Plan that we approved that are not in this list on page 21.
I know in the world language, I don't remember world language.
Literally, it was how many kids are taking, how many, I brought it with me, but.
So we need to add those two to make it a complete list.
Correct. And what I would say, let me, if you'll send it to me, like, to let me know what you think is missing.
Okay.
Let me make sure it's a data point that we can actually gather, because, again, when I first started, that was one of the challenges, was a few of the data points. We don't have a data system to pull that, so I just want to make sure, whatever we're doing, that it's, somebody can pull it out of IC.
It may have been in our District Improvement Plan, but that's because we had a concept, and it maybe didn't work out, yeah.
But, and which is fine, but then, my thought of what we were supposed to be doing is, for example, something like the extracurricular participation. This District Improvement Plan, we're not doing like with the facilities plan where we just keep extending it out. This District Improvement Plan ends in 2020, at what point there could be time for the next District Improvement Plan. So for this District Improvement Plan, something like extracurricular participation, I assume that when we vote on this, we are voting to strip that out as a metric, because I agree, that was just incredibly onerous for staff and not what we were looking to do. So things like that, this wasn't quite clear to me for some of these, when, for example, we make, when there's the comment, monitoring all areas. I mean, I was responding to the yellow highlight. Yellow highlight clearly tells me this is new, you were looking to add it. But just if there could be clarification of what you want removed.
Okay.
Again, I completely agree about the Common Assessments, with, you know, those internal formative works that guide teacher instruction and the curriculum work. I agree, those should be taken out, but I just think that this should be more formal about that of, remove this line from the District Improvement Plan, is something I was looking for. And then, so I'll just throw that out there as a comment, and then I will go back and double-check the list. But this, I apologize, what's the name for this? This? this, this memo from August 2018, this you're calling the...
I think that's the crosswalk line you're looking at, because it, in the work plan that staff are doing, we used everything from the original work plan, but it is formatted to match Vision of a Graduate, because everything we're doing pre-K through twelve is under those six tenants. So that document had to undo, pull it out of the Vision of the Graduate, put it back in under the original plan, so the Board could see how the Vision of the Graduate actually fits into the 2015 plan.
Right, because I guess, I wasn't sure if these weren't two separate issues, and I'm not positive of that. It's one thing to vote on the changes to the District Improvement Plan, but then there is the discussion of some of the specifics in this cross-reference document, and so I'm looking for guidance on, is part of our vote talking about this, or is that something separate, and we can continue with discussing some of these items? I'm unclear.
Yeah, I think the District Improvement Plan is that original 2015 plan, and it's the new sections that have been added in here that hasn't changed. What this is showing you is how the work that the district is doing. We're not voting on the work that staff are doing in order to accomplish that. Most of it actually comes through the budget process, to be honest. When you talk about like the STEAM program, and, you know, what are we going to accomplish from the staff perspective this year, and that's the document you've seen a couple of times, but that's not what, we stayed, we've stayed true to the original actions that the Board set, and we're making sure the work we're doing is continuing. So if you look in here, we were supposed to have K-2 World Language. In the work plan this year, we're addressing that, to go back in and look at that, is there a way for us to meet that, because we kind of put it off for a year or two.
Right, but to my point, and then I'm willing to cede the floor to somebody else, when we, comments like ongoing, develop and implement a middle school advisory program ongoing, there's certain comments in this cross-reference document, that's a very simple one, others are more complicated, that I would want more information about. I don't understand why something is ongoing. I thought we developed and implemented it.
Well, if it's ongoing, it means that, once you implement something, if you, especially within the concept of this long-term planning and implementation, we should be working on it every single year. So we don't want to say to the Board, yeah, we did that two years ago, let's mark it off the list. Now we really don't care what happens in advisory. So when it says ongoing, that, we're still very focused on that work, and every year we want to get better at what we do. Does that...
That, which makes sense, except that I am looking to cross something off the list in terms of, it's a district improvement, a plan that we were looking to accomplish things, and so that's a terminology thing. I completely respect that there's, okay, how is this looking, et cetera, but at some point, I want, would want to be able to say, we accomplished this. And, but again, that's what I mean by, this could be a whole separate discussion from the vote on the District Improvement Plan, and that's what I'm perhaps to...
Yeah, and I could say, instead of complete, we could say accomplished, and it...
Right, so that's what, but that's the discussion I was looking to have, which I'm not looking to have right now.
Do you have other questions or comments, or Ms. Jacobson?
I'm kind of in the same camp with that, only because on page ten of the District Improvement Plan, at the bottom, it says that during the third year of implementation, which would have been last year, a formal review of the plan will be undertaken to determine if specific actions need to be modified, subtracted, or added to the plan for consideration and affirmance of the Board. So I kind of went through it with that mindset of, some of these things we're clearly not doing anymore, some of them are still to be done possibly next year, such as looking at the middle school schedule, that hasn't happened yet, and some of them need to be somewhat tweaked, like BYOD to school issued, et cetera. So I kind of took that, because I wasn't here in 2015, who created that, so I thought, but that's what we were doing right now, that we were getting to that third-year review through this process.
Well, and I, from my perspective, I think when we, when we were looking at everything in June, and then getting the crosswalk was letting the Board know, here's what we had in 2015, here's how we're moving forward. I look at this like from the specific actions to make sure that we're still working with the Improvement Plan and what the intent of that was. Some of those items, like, you know, mastery now instead of capstone have changed, and that is reflected in the work plan and then in that crosswalk. So it's kind of like saying you're wanting the crosswalk language just to change in here, and I don't know if that's what you're asking or not. But if it says complete, it means we did it, and we've accomplished it, but it's ongoing, because until this plan is finished, it's still, you know, your first year of implementation, it's not where you want it to be. You want to continue to work on things.
Okay, thank you. I, right now, I'll hold the rest of my comments on this, but I guess I was a bit, a little bit confused between the work plan, this, and the crosswalk, and just kind of assimilating all of these things into one piece for the Board and the district and the public, to have one item that we are looking at from this year going forward that updates, revises, gives us a status report, a status column of where we're at, which we already have here, but it's kind of the integration of these...
Oh, it's challenging, because...
I hear you, I hear you, because it's kind of like, whoa!
In 2015, we didn't have Vision of the Graduate, and so taking the current 2015 and making it, you know, current for the state of Connecticut and for our district and where we're really going, it is, it took a lot of time to be able to put those two together, and I think that if you really want, to me, this District Improvement document lets the community know, we were committed to a District Improvement Plan, these were the action items. The work plan, actually, that the staff has that is online, really talks more specifically about how we're going to meet that, and that's out there, which we've already talked, you know, talked about those items.
I'd be curious to see what other Board members feel about whether District Improvement Plan should be amended to be current, so that it's accurate as to what we're doing going from here forward. But, I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's three different things, it's just kind of confusing to have three different things, that's all I think. Thank you.
I personally think that it is accurate, with the exception of some things that Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli picked up, and will have to get adjusted when we act on this. We've not normally acted on the staff district initiatives work plan. It's been presented to us, but we have normally considered that we vote the plan, and the superintendent assigns and chooses what initiatives will happen in one particular year based on a staff work plan.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking about the work plan. I wasn't speaking about voting on the work plan. I was voting on update, doing that review and amending and what we were supposed to do in year three, and update the actual District Improvement Plan. So that's all I was, I didn't mean the work plan.
Yeah. So if there are, another, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli mentioned a couple of things that she caught. If any Board member catches that there are, that there are other things that you think should be brought in, because there's a change and it ought to be reflected, bring those forward. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
And just as a follow-up to Mrs. Jacobson's point, is that if someone does see something that they think needs to be edited, that's the idea of this, is to review, so that if, I assume if something can be put in print to be put out in our packet leading up to that meeting on the 25th, if that's when we're going to vote on this or continue discussion, let's see the language that's being suggested, and we take it from there. Am I correct, Mr. Dreyer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments or questions from Board members? So, Dr. Jones, we'll continue to work on this, and it'll come up for a official vote when the document is ready. Not necessarily at the very next meeting, depending on the workload. Okay, thank you very much. We're on approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the special minutes of August 28, 2018, and the regular minutes of August 28, 2018. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Vitale? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand. Nine to zero, thank you very much. Superintendent's Report. The summer projects update, I had asked to have her include that in her superintendent's report, because at our last meeting, we had extended conversation on the Ward football field, but we did not have conversation on the other fifty or so projects, and personally, I would like to bring Mr. Cullen forward, because he should have a chance to talk about that, and we ought to thank him for fifty-eight out of the sixty, or whatever the number is, that we're on time and on budget. So I'll ask Dr. Jones to make her initial comments and bring Mr. Cullen forward.
Yes, I will ask Mr. Cullen to come forward, and it was an extremely busy summer, and it still is, actually, just in the whole facilities area, and especially if you remember, because we had frozen certain maintenance projects last year because of the state budget, so that put more pressure on the end of the year and the summer projects. So, Mr. Cullen, if you'd like to come forward, and just some highlights of your summer projects.
For the record, Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. So in your board packet, we provided a quick one-pager that really was going to highlight some of the key projects that got done.
And that is from the past meeting?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we had a total of about sixty-seven projects this summer, which Dr. Jones just mentioned. Because so many were frozen, they got added to the eighteen, nineteen proposed projects and all of the non-recurring. But I provided with you some of the highlights on some of the schools where some major projects were done. As in, you can see from Dwight Elementary School, I won't go over each one, there's no time, but Early Childhood Center, Fairfield Ward, a couple, Fairfield Ludlow High School, Rodgell Middle School, wasn't even a project, this was a repair. We were having trouble with the two chillers at Rodgell Middle School that needed extensive work and funding that we had to find to do that work. And then a lot of district-wide projects. We've got probably eight or ten more that are going to finish up at the end of this month. Some of them are not real critical, like the Holland Hill Boiler, they're working on that. That'll be in time for the startup of the heating season, the artificial turf field, scoreboards, things like that. So generally, that's it, to make it quick.
And you might want to give us an update on our delivery for the Ward project, turf project?
Well, the turf field is good news. The contractor did start, both event fields were done, which the event fields are the pole vault and the long jump. Those require pits with concrete around them. It was a subcontractor that we recommended to the contractor that's working on it. All of the grass turf is down. They were adding the black crumb rubber to it, sewing in the letters and the numbers, and that's going along very smoothly. We had the engineer and architect come out. I asked them to come out and make sure it looked right to them, so we didn't have any more delays or problems. They were extremely happy, so that's always a good sign, because they're watching the drawings and the documents and the specifications. Spoke with the main contractor, Sprint Turf, to make sure that the GMAX bounce testing company that has to come in as a third party is ready, so when they are done, that testing is done, so that when it's approved for occupancy, we have everything in place. So that's going very well.
Anything else you wish to add?
Nope.
Board members, Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. So, I know that a memo went out to the Ward community right after our last meeting, saying that the turf field should be complete the week of the seventeenth, which is next week. Is that still the case, or is it not the case?
The project is, their scope and schedule is September 28th, but they've told us verbally they think they can get it done for the 14th or the 17th.
Okay.
They told us in that memo, actually.
That memo said the week of the 17th.
They did say the week of the 17th.
Right, and that was in writing, that wasn't verbal. So, so I guess my question is, let's just say that that memo from Sprint Turf is correct, and it will be next week. Does that mean that the field is usable next week, or does that mean that the field is usable the following week or the week after?
It's supposed to mean that the field is usable, which includes the bounce test, the GMAX testing that has to be done, so that students can be on it. It'll include the warranty being released, because as soon as we step on that field, the contractor's going to want to say that the warranty started.
Okay.
And it will include the architect and engineer's punch list.
So hypothetically, as of now, there hasn't been any change since that memo went out, so hypothetically, the Ward turf field will be able to be used by the Ward athletic teams who use it next week?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for the, Mr. Cullen? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Just briefly, do you see anything carrying over to the 1920 budget? That we had planned on budgeted for, for this past year?
Yes. There would be things that were cut. The Tomlinson flooring job was cut when the selectman made his decision on the funding back to the district, so that got cut. That'll go into 1920. And the Mill Hill, there was a Mill Hill flooring job that we didn't do, because Mill Hill's coming up for a full renovation. Those are the only two I can think of.
So everything else that we discussed, budgeted for, whether it's already done or will be in the next couple of weeks? Check.
Yes. Fairfield Woods Middle School Front Entrance Project bids just came back. We've got to schedule that work. We have to meet with the principal yet, and see if he wants to try and fit that in, blocking off the front entrance, or if we want to wait till April break or June.
The answer is yes.
But yes.
Okay. If anything else occurs, if we could be, maybe as part of the next superintendent's update, just a definitive list of anything else that might be moving forward, so that if in November, December, January, something sounds familiar, we knew about it now. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Mrs. Gerber?
Just really quickly, since I drive through Ludlow very often, the tennis courts and the student parking lot look fantastic.
Yeah, good, good. Thank you.
At our last meeting, we had extensive conversation on Ward, because our Board cares about the facilities, and I want to extend on behalf of the whole Board our appreciation to your staff and yourself, and I'm going to say especially ninety-five percent of the vendors who deliver for us on time and on budget. It is not easy managing that number of construction projects, so please pass on our appreciation for all the work that your staff do.
I will. Thank you very much for that.
Back to the superintendent on the other two items.
Just from the opening of the school, we've had a great start to the school year. It's always, you know, so full of energy, and it's, it's just been a fun start. But the challenges have been the heat, obviously. We had, you know, an early release day, but I did provide at your seat just the information for the Board. When we, when I put out information that says our buildings have kind of partial air, because a lot of our community think we have buildings that have, like, no air conditioning at all. So when you look at some of the districts that are doing early release when it's not quite as hot, generally, those are the buildings that literally have no air conditioning in them. So it's, we don't put this online because of safety and security and the maps, but I think even if you look at, about the third one in is Jennings', and on the top left is where it has their name. All of those boxes that are in yellow are actually where you have air conditioning, and, you know, it's, it's a lot more than what most people would expect, and that's primarily due to the fact that when we have a child who has special needs, we do put in a unit for that classroom, and just over time, because we haven't had air, it's built up in a lot of the classrooms. Along with that, though, I will say, the one thing I would like to put out there, and I've been talking to Mr. Cullen about, is we've had a plan, really a ten, fifteen-year plan to get rid of trailers, and we've pretty well almost completed that, especially when Mill Hill goes forward. I would like to see us have a ten-year plan to get air conditioning in our schools. I do believe very strongly it is a health and safety issue for our children and our staff, and I say that because, you know, in the old days, and I take a building, if I see Mr. Arnon sitting there, you know, you used to be able to open your door and have that cross breeze on those really hot days. Our teachers aren't even allowed to open their doors. When we upgrade windows, like we've done at Ludlow, the windows barely open. They're 21st century windows in a 1960s building, and it is becoming a health and a safety issue. It's a safety issue, because you can't open your doors, and it's a health issue because of the heat. We do have a lot of air conditioning. There'll be some buildings that are going to be much more challenging than others, but we're even in the conversation that when you look at a Jennings', if you just completed the rooms with individual units, would that be better than not having any air at all? Because that's going to, the renovation for that building is a long time coming. So we would like to start thinking about that, and maybe even at the Capitol Summit, if the Board thinks, just planting that seed, so that people have heard it, and then in the 2019 plan, let's start thinking about what that could look like over a decade. I know Mr. Cullen and I, when we were talking about it, you know, the plan was that it would happen naturally through renovation, and he said he's been here seventeen years, and when you look at the front of this page, we only have five buildings that have air. So I do think there's a sense of urgency for our staff and our students, so I share that with you.
Before you move on, because you've introduced the subject, any comments from Board members on the suggestion that we ought to give serious consideration to a multi-year effort on air conditioning? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, no, I definitely think that that makes a tremendous amount of sense, because the schools that aren't air conditioned, and even the ones that have partial air conditioning, are still brutally, brutally unpleasant for students. So I think that that's a good idea, I guess, just to kind of piggyback on that, because I know you had mentioned in our last meeting when we were discussing the long-range facilities plan, Mr. Dwyer, that, you know, the board itself hasn't actually approved a new version of this plan since 2015, so perhaps we might want to think throughout the course of this year, if we did it, you know, in 2019, that would be four years, which would mean four years from 2011 to fifteen, and then four years from fifteen to nineteen, we might want to look at that just and incorporate some of those air conditioning changes. But I will just say, I recall back in 2013, I believe, when I asked about Ludlow being fully air-conditioned, we were told at the time in 2013, it would be eight million dollars. So, and I'm sure it's even more than that, so I just think it probably would be helpful to start having that conversation, and I do agree that mentioning it, at least in passing, at the capital planning workshop, just kind of percolate the idea, especially while it is still warm in our schools, just to remind people, because once it gets cold, they're going to kind of forget it until the spring. So that, I would wholeheartedly support that and be happy to advocate for that at all times.
Any other comments, Mrs. Maxon-Colling?
And just briefly speaking of that capital planning workshop, as I passed Mr. DeWitt, Board of Finance member, Mr. DeWitt in the hallway at the Ward Open House, if anyone remembers what the weather was like last Thursday, I put in a little elbow poke and a plug regarding the need for air conditioning, and he wiped his brow, so, but I, I'll just leave it at that.
Any other comments, Mrs. Jacobson?
Just a quick statement, and that I agree that that's a good idea, and I would support that as well.
I don't think any board member is going to say, "No, I don't want any air conditioning", but I do believe that from time to time, the Board of Finance gets thrown a little loop when they suddenly see something in September of nineteen, that they weren't at least given an update in the prior year. So expressing the board's strong support for the staff developing a plan, hopefully you won't get pelted, and you'll be rewarded for giving them a heads-up. If there are other questions on school, opening of school update, enrollment update?
Just one more question.
Yeah.
Just to get back to the opening of school update, I was just curious, I know it's early, but have there, how have things been going with the newcomer academy at the elementary, middle and high school? Has, I mean, I know it's just a couple of weeks, so I was just curious to see how that program is getting going.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Cummings, if you want to answer that, it's really at the elementary level, we're watching our numbers, because most of our students are in one building, so it, I don't, I don't know if you can speak more-
Most of the newcomers, you mean?
Yeah, are in one building. Naturally, that's where they're enrolled, and that's where they live, it's their zone of residence.
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. The biggest changes, I would say, in terms of the newcomer academy implementation are probably at Ward High School, where we've increased staffing and primarily to support classroom teachers who have EL students in their classroom, as well as to continue the EL tutoring services. As Dr. Jones mentioned, we've, at McKinley School, where, as you know, most of our EL students reside, we're looking to, with Ms. Ginggrave now as the principal, continue to implement or improve the services there. The biggest changes are really happening, as I said, at the high school. We're not, we're strengthening the programs at McKinley and Tomlinson, we're strengthening the program at Ward, but there's not been a movement of students across the district, for example, into one building. This summer, when we, as you know, we did assessments of students as they entered the district at all levels, and really, the biggest change, we had one student identified who was not a McKinley student, who was going to attend another elementary school. We reached out to that family to see if they were interested in attending McKinley, and they did not. So we're strengthening the programs where they currently exist and the great number of students, but we've not seen a movement of students across the district.
So just to clarify, there haven't been any students outside of McKinley, Tomlinson and Ward who have moved to those schools-
That's correct.
-to do this?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, I'd like, one other comment related to facilities, I think board members are probably aware, but the community may not be, of the couple of schools that over the Labor Day weekend, staff had to work very hard to make sure we could open the schools on time. And part of that included cooperation from the town building department to be available on very short notice to do final inspections over a holiday period when most people are at the beach. So I thank the town and the staff and the vendors for making those last couple of schools available to us. Enrollment update?
The enrollment update as of this week, and just as a reminder, our official count will come on October one, but we are within twenty-one as a school system of what was projected. Elementary is sixty-six less, middle school is twenty more students than what was projected, high school is seventy-seven more students than what was projected, but again, overall, we're within about twenty-one as of this week in what was projected, so we're coming in pretty close. Nine thousand seven hundred and ninety is where we're sitting right now.
Questions on enrollment update?
Nine thousand seven hundred and ninety, and we did have six more enrolling today at McKinley, so you could make that ninety-six.
So as soon as we give the report, it's out of date, right? Any other questions from committee members, if not committee liaison reports? We have any committee liaison, Mr. Peterson?
From Board of Finance last week, a couple of, a couple of things. First, just to get it out of the way, the capital planning workshop has been changed in both place and time. It is now going to be at Osborne Hill at eight PM on Monday, the seventeenth, so that's a big thing that we'll be talking about. One of the things, and I informed Dr. Jones about this over the past week, the members of Policy Committee, the, there was a vote in the Board of Finance to approve a $750,000 allocation for, to expand a pilot program that was for police body camps, it's going to go to the entire force, and in the course of this discussion, it came out that that would also include the police officers that are stationed in the schools. And I happened to go to the Board of Finance meeting immediately after, we were talking in Policy Committee about student records and confidentiality, so that's why I wanted to bring that up to the Superintendent, members of Policy Committee, Colleen DC. So I don't know if there's been an update on that, but obviously, it feels like that's an intersection of two important things that we want to decide how to best manage. And just to throw out a couple of other things, the Board of Finance was also very interested, obviously, in the Ward turf progress, and also the Chromebook issue. I try to do my best and, you know, kind of cover that gap, but I think that we're going to get a lot of questions about it on Monday, and I might recommend, even if there, I know all the materials, you know, in the budget book and a lot of documents from last year, but if there's some way we could prepare a precis of kind of where the money came from and how it was spent, that might, that might go over well.
Like the memo that we got in some fashion?
In some fashion, yes.
Any comments or questions to Mr. Peterson on the Board of Finance? I'm, Mrs. Jacobson?
I just wanted to know if there was an answer to his question, if we had an update on the SRO question, were you able to talk to Mr. Wheel?
We don't have an answer yet.
Okay, that's a concern, though, right? I mean-
It's a concern in that even with our regular cameras, it's emergency access only, so yes, there are always, there's always camera access when you're talking about working with the police department. We have not had it on their person, so that when they're walking around a building, they, you know, could be filming.
They would be filming.
Well, they do have, and as Mr. Peterson and I discussed too, the ability to turn it off.
Yeah.
So, you know, is it an MOU that when they're inside the building, it's turned off, and then they turn it on in emergencies, that part, we've got to work through that.
Right, although I will point out that various members of the Board of Finance were wondering why the police wouldn't have them on all the time, and Deputy Chief Liddy did discuss that there would obviously be situations, he was talking more about kind of domestic violence cases where someone being filmed may want it to be turned off, but if this is also appropriate to be turned off in school, I think that's something that we should discuss. And I guess the other thing that I would mention in regard to Mrs. Jacobson's question is that the current plan, the allocation is also to pay for servers, for them to store the data at the police department, so it would be records that are out of our custody.
I will remind the board that Mr. Quinn has asked for time on the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and then he'll, Board of Finance, I think he'll come to our meeting next, the Board of Selectmen, we're going to consider it, but then they postpone it to another meeting, so the order of discussion will be Board of Finance, Board of Education, Board of Selectmen on the open questions. So if you wish to be at either one of those board meetings, feel free. Other committee and liaison reports, Mrs. Leeper?
Just a few quick updates from the Finance Committee, we're continuing our conversation about sponsorships. There was a memo, although I don't think it was enclosed, about the proposal to go paperless.
I have your draft here for you to proof again.
Okay.
We didn't have email last week, and so we couldn't send it.
Should I give that update?
You can, you can give an update, we want you to prove the draft first.
Okay.
Approve it, yeah.
Well, you could give an update, but the memo won't go out until the draft is approved.
It seems that it may have come to Cabe's attention after presenting to our board that in fact, their paperless source is not ADA compliant, and so we will be holding off from using their product for the time being. We have several questions to answer and other things, and alternatives to look into, but we won't be going paperless. But the website has been changed over, this was not under the purview of the Finance Committee, but just, they kind of go hand in hand, and the website is now ADA compliant. I know those two things kind of got conflated when we did talk about this topic, so I just wanted, for clarity purposes, to update you on that. And I see some quizzical faces, does anyone have a conversation? A question, okay. And then after lots of conversation and debate around crowdfunding for blinds, we made the decision in the committee that if blinds are really a safety item, then it needs to be a district priority to be put in the budget and not at the discretion of crowdsourcing. So we will continue to explore the idea of crowdsourcing funds for something that is not essential in that way.
Any questions for Mrs. Leeper or Mrs. Jacobson?
How are you doing on corporate sponsorship? You've been talking about it for a while, so I'm just wondering if we're getting close to being able to be like, yay, or?
So as a committee, we feel like it's sort of a no-brainer. The ADs are just, they had a company that they wanted to go with, and that person left the company, so now they kind of had to start over, and they just started the conversation with families. So my hunch is it might, the conversation might slope down a bit, but we are hopefully going to have more information on the agenda for next, next meeting, and I'm putting a push to either, to get this done, because it's money that is kind of just for the taking.
Anybody else on committee liaison reports? Mrs. Vitale?
PTA Council had their leadership meeting last Friday, it was well-intended, their first, oop, their first meeting is September seventeenth, seven-thirty at Rogers Ludlow Middle School. Rogers Sherman Building Committee is meeting tonight, they're interviewing, they invited the architects back, meeting tonight and tomorrow, and they hope to make a decision at their meeting tomorrow, so that's where we are with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Vitale? If not, any other committee liaison reports? None, okay, thank you. Open board comment, this is the time, if you wish to make comments on agenda items, please feel free to come forward and state your name and address, and I remind you of our three-minute rule.
Sure, I'll make it quick. Hi, Kathleen Joy Ross, 682 Beach Road. I wanted to talk to everybody tonight about the ECC. I waited to the end of the meeting because I wanted to listen to everything that I heard. My son Peter has been in the ECC for three and a half years and has successfully transitioned into an elementary school. He's doing fantastic, even noted by the new principal, he's remarkable. I also stand before you to represent other families that have English as a second language. They couldn't stand here today to talk to you, but they wanted me to make sure that their voice was heard too. Specifically, when a three-year-old shows up at a school and is completely naked, there's no way that they can go into a normal elementary school environment. The environments in which these children go to is very, very important, it has to stay within a unique environment. The ECC has decentralized its program with the new addition of Stratfield. However, I don't believe that's been successful from the back-channeling I've heard from parents. We need to get better data. I think we all agree on that. The asks of you tonight are to push for data. We also need transparency into the plans for the future of the ECC and the children. We also need to ensure that the facilities are what we need for those children, such as air conditioning. We need root cause analysis on what's causing some of the dysfunctional areas of our community, such as gun violence and bullying. These are systemic of children that have special needs, as we've seen across the news in the United States. We also have a major, major diversity issue in Fairfield, we all know it, and we need to push in diversity into our school systems in order to have more normalization for global society in the future. Transitions are especially difficult for children in the ECC, but they're more difficult later on in life than they are in their earlier years. This is proven by a lot of research done in early childhood. Most recently, US News World and Reports has deemed several states rankings on early childhood. Number one, New Jersey. Number two, Vermont. Number three, New York. Number seven, Connecticut. We've got some work to do. We're not alone, we can rely on other states and other models to make our school system the best in the United States. We have huge competition across the country, we can't neglect that. I ask everybody on the Board of Education to reach beyond our local resources and our local communities like Greenwich and Darien. They're not equal parodies to Fairfield. Fairfield is a diverse community, we need to look at it that way.
You're at the three-minute mark, do you have one more sentence?
Sure. Please exhaust all options to restructure and budget within the discrimination of children that are at the most vulnerable points in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and address the board? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Laura King, 245 Uncle Road. My son is currently a first-grade student at Osborne Hill in a CLC program. He went to the ECC for two and a half years, and as Kristen Bruno stated, they made a recommendation for him to transition to Riverfield, our home school. That was the wrong recommendation for him, and after five months, we had to move him in the middle of the school year last year. So I have a unique perspective as a parent with a, who had an unsuccessful transition to kindergarten. But I do not believe that decentralizing the ECC will solve that problem for everybody else. What I believe the problem is that for the two and a half years that he spent at the ECC, he studied the same curriculum for those entire, that entire period. And as Tricia Pitko mentioned, the new kindergarten curriculum is extremely difficult and extremely different than what it used to be. And our children are not being prepared for what is expected of them in kindergarten. So my recommendation would be to separate the kids that are going to be transitioning to kindergarten and send them to a designated pre-K program, either at a different school or within the ECC, and create a new curriculum for those students that will prepare them for kindergarten, so we don't have instances like my son's and like Tricia's daughter, and probably many other students. Because there's a lot of students that are being held for the extra year at the ECC because they have fall birthdays, and because they're now recognizing that you can't send a four-year-old who is developmentally a three-year-old to a kindergarten program where kids aren't starting until they're six and a half. And that was our issue, so we did hold him, and we fought to hold him, he has a December birthday, so he did start Riverfield as a five-and-a-half-year-old, and he still couldn't hang there. and he still couldn't hang there. But I believe it was more based on the curriculum and less based on the program. So I'm asking you to consider, for space-wise, Dr. Jones, you said that the chart with the numbers is the most important. And if we need to split the ECC program, this is an ideal way to split it and transition a group of kids together that could academically succeed in an elementary school environment, while also keeping the three- and four-year-olds in the centralized program that they absolutely need. There is no way that a three-year-old could socialize with a fourth or fifth grader and, you know, feel confident. So I'm just asking the board to consider, as one of your options, possibly creating a designated ECC pre-K program. Thank you.
Two minutes, 59 seconds. Thank you very much. You did well. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Bonnie Rotelli, 1280 Merritt Street. And I'm kind of scattered on my stuff. I'm trying to pull from five different areas. But I, I sort of echo what Laura just said about the Fives program. I think it's a great option for us to look into. But ultimately, you all got my letter, I think decentralizing, or closing, basically closing down the ECC, which is what decentralizing is, is a huge mistake, and takes us a step backwards in special ed for Fairfield, instead of going forward. And I think, you know, the last meeting, I was here, it was vague at best. They, you know, the ECC was on the agenda, or discussion of the ECC was on the agenda, but it wasn't talked about until we got to the facilities plan, where they talked about earmarking the money to move Walter Fitzgerald to the ECC, which then, you know, it perked all of us up, like, well, what's this? And then there was the rush to, like, resolve the lease problem on Walter Fitzgerald by this month, at the next meeting, which makes us all think, okay, well, they want to put Walter Fitzgerald at the ECC, and this is going to happen in a month, and, you know, everybody's writing letters and freaking out. And there's no transparency. We don't know what's going on. And now we're getting a presentation, that we're going to have another presentation, and we're going to look into talking to people we should have been talking to before we ever made a presentation. And so, you know, in the past, as an active member of SEPTA, and as a person who's volunteered in the sped community for a decade and worked at the public school system, we should be looking to have those focus groups, and that communication with the parents, and consulting the staff of the school on what's best for our kids, so we can advocate for an appropriate program and get the funding behind it. I mean, we're pretty good at that. You know, we show up and fight. We fight for our kids, and then we go and fight for all the other kids who, you know, who follow suit. And we will maintain this excellent program, I have no doubt, because that's what's best for our children. So I ask that maybe we don't look into looking at this district and that district, and consulting CES. Consult the parents and the staff. We know this program works. Let's figure out a way to make it work. Let's figure out what we have to do. A Fives program, you know, is it, you know, looking at short-term solutions before we can get a long-term facilities goal? I don't know. But we haven't looked into that. We're going to look into all this other stuff. No, let's just focus on what's going to succeed. We already know it. You've got a huge support of, of parents who have already come out, and no doubt, that's the feedback you're going to get at a, at the next SEPTA meeting. So, thanks for everybody who responded to my letter, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward in the last four minutes of our meeting? Anybody else wish to come forward? Seeing nobody come forward, I skipped open board comment. Any open board comment? Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn, Ms. Pitko, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.